Good evening, everybody. This is Tina, the clerk in the chamber. I had mentioned earlier, but I'll just state it again for those who joined on. Counsel is expected to be about 6:15 when they'll be starting the public hearing. Good evening, Counselor Swanson. It's Tina here in the chamber. Can you hear me?
I can. Hi, Tina. How are you?
Good, good. And we can hear you as well and see you. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, Counselor Carr. Can we do an audio test?
Absolutely. Tina, how are you?
Good, good. And we can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
And we're also seeing you well.
Tina? Yes. It's Counselor Carr here.
Yes.
I've... Oh, sorry. It said... No, it's okay. I'm fine.
You're okay? We have Hal with us tonight if you need anything.
Yep.
And he's intently listening to you.
Okay. So I think... Okay. I think that it was fine.
Okay.
Something just resolved. Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. Counselor Frye, would you like to do an audio test, please?
Sure thing. Good evening, Tina.
Oh. Do you want to try speaking a little closer?
Well, I could certainly try speaking a little closer. Test one, two.
Yes. That works better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart. How about an audio test?
Yep. Great. Thanks. Ready to go.
All right. Just got to make sure we have quorum. I was letting people know around 6:15.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, we've got a couple more minutes for sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Counselor Bly, I see you there. Would you like to do an audio test?
Yes. Hi, Tina.
Hi. You're coming in loud and clear. Thank you.
I have an LOA for tonight, but I'm joining the meeting and then I will drop off. But I'll send you a note.
Okay. And if you miss any representation, we'll try to make sure we know that so that we can help you with links afterwards if necessary.
Yes. I appreciate that. I do plan to watch it in the background, but I just have a board book to read.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I'm going to try and do both, but I just want to keep you updated.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Boyle?
I can hear you loud and clear. Tina, can you hear me?
Likewise. And we can see you. Thank you. Mayor Stewart, we're just doing a couple of checks here with our sound, so we'll just hold for another moment.
Hi. Could you hear me? I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear somebody.
We're just making sure we're connected for the public as well.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So Mayor Stewart, if you're ready, you do have quorum, and I can give you the five countdown, and we'll flip the switch.
Okay.
Here we go. Five, four, three, two, one.
Evening, counsel. I'm going to call this public hearing of Thursday, March 11th, the order. For the purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. Only councils should have their video enabled, so not proponents or staff or any presenters. Any staff or applicants should disable their video. We're convening this meeting by electronic means under ministerial order M192. Oh, I'm getting some feedback there. If, Mike, if our connections are lost during any portion of this meeting, we'll recess until the connection's restored. To me, this live stream, the live stream of this meeting will have both audio and video. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Members of the public can also listen to the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which is tweeted out on @VancityClerk. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. I also want to note the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. And I remind counsel that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name or role or title. Lastly, following the updated guidance issued on February 5th, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the PHO order on gatherings and events. Therefore, speakers will be providing comments by phone and will assist folks who are patching through when their call comes up. Clerks, with the roll call, please.
Yes. Mayor Stewart in the chair. Counselor Carr?
Here.
Counselor DeGenova?
Present.
Counselor Frye?
Present.
Counselor Swanson?
Here.
Counselor Hardwick?
Present.
Counselor Weeb?
Present.
Counselor Boyle?
Present.
Counselor Dominado?
Present.
Counselor Bly? Counselor Kirby Young?
Present.
And clerk, this is Counsel Bly, I'm present. Thank you.
Yes. Did I hear Counselor Kirby Young?
Yes.
Yes, did. Present.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart?
Thanks so much. And as always, we acknowledge we're in the unceded traditional territories of Musqueam, Skomish, and Sabletooth, and thank them for having care for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. And of course, we always want to shout out to staff for doing a fantastic job, as usual, but especially during COVID-19. So thanks to staff. For this evening, speakers have five minutes to make their comments. They should state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations, and if they reside in the City of Vancouver. Speakers can only speak once and should follow along on Twitter @VancityClerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted using our online form at vancouver.ca-public-hearing-comments, and the link is also on Twitter. A reminder that counsel's role of public hearing is to be a quasi-judicial body, which means that counsel is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. And if we stray off into policy conversations, I'll try to gently get us back on track. Counsel members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers and the moving of the... After the motion is... Report is moved. After hearing from speakers, counsel may approve in principle the application, refuse the application, or defer the application for further consideration. So it's not likely that we're going to get to item four tonight, so speakers have been advised of this because we have a lot of speakers for item two. And the next reconvene date for this public hearing is Thursday, April 1st at 6:00 p.m. So the first item is CD1 text amendment 100 West 49th Avenue, which is Langara College. Anybody wish to declare conflict of interest on this item? I don't hear any, so the clerk's going to now read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by Schmidt and Associate Development Planning Limited to amend CD1 district at 100 West 49th Avenue to accommodate the college's current phase master plan for the campus, which consists of academic and community buildings. If approved, subsequent development permits for specific buildings will be submitted individually with each phase of expansion. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Three pieces of correspondence in opposition and two pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:30 p.m. today.
Mayor Stewart? Are you on mute or...?
Looks like we've lost the mayor.
Yes. I'm going to have IT connect with the mayor because those are the rules that we need to connect with the mayor.
I think I'm back on.
There we go. Thank you.
I am getting kicked on and off of Cisco, though. I'm just getting kicked on and off of Cisco, so I'm just going to switch from the web to cellular. I'll be right back, clerks.
Okay. We shall wait for the mayor.
There we go, counsel. Can you hear me, clerks?
Yes. Mayor Stewart?
Okay. I'll just keep an eye on it. If I cut out, just let me know, and I can switch to a different connection. So thanks so much. We've now heard the overview. And if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by code 15917 hashtag to get on the list. We have Tiffany Rougeau from the rezoning center. And we do have speakers, counsel, so we'll ask for the presentation. Please, Tiffany Rougeau.
Hi there. I'll first ask if you can hear and see the presentation on screen.
We can.
Excellent. Good evening, mayor and counsel. My name is Tiffany Rougeau, and I'm the planner for this application to amend the CD1 bylaw at 100 West 49th Avenue to allow for the phased master plan of the Langara College campus. The subject site shown in red is Zone CB155. It is 20 acres in size and located at the southwest corner of 49th Avenue between Langara Park and Ontario Street. It shares a south property line with Langara Golf Course and is adjacent to the YMCA. Across Ontario Street to the east is Zone RS1 and falls outside of the Canby Corridor Plan boundaries. Across 49th Avenue to the north, between Canby and Ontario Streets, the Canby Corridor Plan allows for four-story mixed-use buildings with a density of up to 2.5 FSR. Several recently approved applications for four-story mixed-use buildings are located along this portion of 49th Avenue, including an active rezoning application for the YMCA. The site is located on a major arterial with regular bus service and is three blocks east from the Langara 49th Avenue Canaline Station. There are three cycling routes nearby, Ontario Street, 45th Avenue, and Canby Street bikeways. This rezoning application is being considered under the Langara College Policy Statement, which was approved by counsel in 2005. The policy statement provides a policy and site planning framework to guide future development and campus expansion. The site also triggers the city adopted rezoning policy for sustainable large developments, and as such, the rezoning application is not only informed by the goals and directions within the policy statement, but also the requirements set forth in the large sites rezoning policies. The existing CD1 allows for institutional and accessory uses limited to schools and daycare with a maximum FSR of 0.94 for the site and building heights up to 23 meters. Existing facilities include five campus buildings, a library, athletic facility, and a 62-space childcare facility. There have been a handful of minor amendments to the CD1 bylaw over time to allow for immediate programming and spatial needs. Langara College has recently experienced a period of rapid and unprecedented student growth that has put a strain on its existing physical resources. The amount of growth in student enrollment has far exceeded all previous projections. The current proposal by Langara College is intended to present a long-term vision for the campus, one that provides for the needs of the current student population as well as prepares for a range of future growth scenarios. This rezoning application was received in March 2019 and proceeded through a longer review process than is typical due to the complex nature of institutional uses. Staff have assessed the proposed master plan for the college and conclude that it meets the intent of the Langara College Policy Statement. The application proposes amendments to the current CD1 bylaw to allow for the required campus expansion. These amendments include an increase in density from 0.94 to 1.66 to accommodate additional institutional floor area as well as an expanded daycare facility. The uses remain institutional, which is consistent with the existing bylaw and policy statement. New buildings are proposed on either existing surface parking lots or on existing building footprints in order to preserve the trees and open spaces on site. Loading and vehicle parking for the site is proposed to be located underground as the new buildings will replace a large portion of the college's existing surface parking. Over the next 25 to 30 years, the main organizing principle for the new master plan is to better integrate built form and open space. The campus site plan is organized by locating taller six-story buildings closer to the center of the site. Buildings transition in scale to four- and two-story buildings along the perimeter to be more compatible with the neighboring properties. The four-story heights along 49th Avenue are buffered by significant building setback and aligns with the four-story mixed-use buildings anticipated across the street per the Canby Corridor Plan. The four-story building form along Ontario Street also includes significant screening of existing trees. The south and west interface facing Langara Park and Langara Golf Course have four-story buildings proposed, which do not create shadowing impacts to park space. As part of the rezoning application, the applicant team has worked with staff to develop an accompanying set of draft design guidelines, which will inform further design development on each building. The design guidelines set general intent on the massing, form, and height of buildings as well as landscape and open space network across the campus. The images within the application documents display general massing, as the final form of development for each building will be established through the development permit process. The development permit process includes public notification and opportunities for the public to provide input. Consistent with the policy statement and the design guidelines, connections are proposed linking the campus with Langara Park, Ontario Greenway, Langara Trail, and public transit. The application will contribute to street improvements along 49th Avenue between Langara Park and Ontario Street, including a separated bike lane along 49th Avenue, a protected bike lane along Ontario Street between 49th Avenue and 52nd Avenue, and delivery of a Langara Trail connection along the Ontario Street edge of the site. Rezoning conditions also include the provision of additional bicycle parking, end-of-trip facilities, public bike-share stations, and provision of a green mobility and and provision of a green mobility and transportation demand management plan. To reflect Langara College's recognition of its place on the unceded territory of the Musqueam Nation and support of its indigenous students and community members, the proposal includes construction of an indigenous meeting house and landscaping, which is envisioned as one of the key outdoor learning spaces on campus. The proposed application responds to the objectives and principles of the Langara College Policy Statement. Subject to the approval of this rezoning application, staff recommend amendments to the policy statement in order to bring it up to date with current council's directions and policies. The proposed minor amendments include removing outdated sections as they will be superseded by the draft design guidelines, which reference current city policies. The amendments also reflect an updated site context and goals that respond to new enrollment expectations. These amendments are consequential and as such, staff are using this opportunity to bring the policy up to date to better reflect current policies. A community open house was held on July 23rd, 2019. Over 2,200 notifications were distributed and the public were invited to provide comments or questions on the application materials. Staff received 20 pieces of feedback. Of the comments received, there was support for increased building height and density as well as retention of green space. Some comments raised concern about traffic congestion and lack of street parking, building height, and that student housing should be included in the proposal. This application generates a variety of public benefits. In addition to the off-site improvements, such as the protected bike lane on Ontario Street, the application also includes an in-kind community amenity contribution in the form of 12 additional childcare spaces valued at just under $1.9 million. The 12 additional spaces will be added when the existing 62-space childcare facility is relocated and constructed during the first phase of development. These additional spaces will be secured through a legal agreement and childcare facility ownership will remain nonprofit with the college. In addition, the applicant will also be required to pay DCLs and provide a significant public art contribution, bringing the total value of the public benefits offered to just over $26 million. Staff conclude that the proposed Langara College Master Plan is an appropriate urban design response to the site and its context and that the application, along with the recommended conditions of approval, is consistent with the Langara College Policy Statement. This application sets the general form, height, density, and land use permitted for the site through amendments to the CD1 bylaw and creation of draft design guidelines through which each future building would be reviewed during the development permit application process. Approval of this application would enable the college to further contribute toward the city's long-term strategic goal of providing high-quality lifelong learning that affords opportunities for residents to develop and enhance their lives. Thank you. Staff and the applicant team are available for questions.
Great, thanks so much. I'm just going to check and see if the applicant team would like to say anything or just answer questions.
It's Lori Schmidt. I'm just confirming you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Yeah, the applicant team would just like to make a brief statement if we could, please.
Absolutely. Yep.
So my name is Lori Schmidt, President of Schmidt and Associates. I'm the applicant on behalf of Langara College. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Tiffany and city staff for their guidance and hard work on this proposed rezoning you see before you. I want to point out to Mayor of Council and staff that we have our full team online tonight, available to answer any questions. And I'd like to close by introducing Ian Mas. Ian is the Chair of the Langara College Board of Directors. And Ian would like to make a brief presentation on behalf of Langara College. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're on mute. There we go. I can hear you now. Please go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, councilors and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to share a few words with you about Snawfleum, Langara College's long-term vision and important part of our master plan, the important part that it plays in achieving that vision. First, I want to acknowledge with respect that I'm speaking to you today the traditional unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Swinatawip peoples. My name is Ian Mas. I'm the Chair of Langara's Board of Governors. I live in Vancouver, in Champlain Heights. And I'm sure it's obvious, but I'm in favor of this proposal. Is Langara is also known by the name Snawfleum, which means House of Teachings. The name was given to the college in 2016 by the Musqueam people as a mark of our place on their lands and our growing friendship. Langara is committed to advancing the educational recommendations from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and is embarking on the development of a new indigenization strategy for the college and incorporating that strategy into our new 2025 strategic plan. That new strategic plan sets out our long-term vision for Langara along with indigenization. It establishes a vision of an institution that continues to be student-centered and welcoming to all and that provides innovative, high-quality programs that prepare students to contribute to their communities and the local economy, a college that is deeply engaged with our local communities for mutual benefit and is a modern, sustainable organization. The campus master plan for Langara that is being considered here tonight is a critical foundation for us to achieve that future vision. As mentioned, for many years now, more and more students have been choosing Langara to prepare for further studies or their ongoing careers. While we're happy to welcome more students, it's recreated space shortages and challenges and the campus itself has been operating at 120% capacity. This master plan increases the density on campus and would allow us to replace our aging facilities with new buildings of sufficient size and height to support our growth over the next 25 years while respecting our residential neighbors. We are excited about the college's future and the opportunity to build a modern environment for learning and applied research that's sustainable and welcoming to all and that helps us benefit and strengthen connections with our local communities and indigenous partners. Our team that has put this plan together is here with me and they would happy, would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Is that it from the applicants for presentations?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm going to move to council now. You can ask questions to the staff or applicant. Of course, you, this is the only chance you have to ask a question of an applicant. But after we hear from speakers, you'll have another chance to talk to staff if you need to. Counsel Fry, up to five minutes.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. And thanks to staff and the applicant for presenting this. It's absolutely a gorgeous vision for Snawfleum. Did I get that right? Snawfleum. The future of Langara. Fantastic. I really appreciate the attention to the landscaping and the kind of public congregation spaces, the indigenous buildings and form. And I guess my first and immediate question, though, is looking at it, given the location on a Skytrain station and the significant amount of development that we anticipate coming into this area, including Oak Ridge and the surrounding area, is this ambitious enough for a master plan as far as the capacity to deal with what will soon be a very major center of town within the next 25 to 30 years?
Over to the applicant.
Could you go bigger, is the question, I guess.
I am going to defer that to to the architect, Steve Tople, if I can, please.
Sure, thank you. And good evening, Mayor and members of council. I mean, one could always go a bit bigger, but you know, the campus is in a neighborhood and we're trying to find a very careful compromise between respecting that neighborhood and enabling growth. The master plan was based on a very detailed analysis of student growth. So each increment is actually represents when the college hits a certain amount of student growth, this is the amount of space that you would require. And it actually does meet all of the requirements for growth that that analysis indicated, which was performed by an educational ECS, an educational consulting service. So the volumes of building relate to a detailed study of growth and provide the area for growth indicated by that study in the time increments indicated. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that response. And so I was saying then this does leave the flexibility to grow with the neighborhood as well, then. Another question on the issue of, on the bike share. What is the extent of bike share that you guys contemplate for this space? It seems like a great opportunity and I only see a couple of bike share sites on the map.
The applicant?
Maybe Cory, could you respond to that one?
Yes. My name's Cory Chan. I'm the local architect working with Antipal architects on this. So the bike share for the moment has only been, we've been working with staff and we have identified two locations along Ontario based on what staff has currently asked for. One of the things about the master plan is that this is just a baseline, you know, growth analyses. And one of the intentions is as new buildings come online and parking and bicycle traffic is studied, if increase, you know, bike shares need to be placed in, it would be part of the requirement within the development permit. So there is a level of flexibility for growth. But as of today, we've only been asked to indicate the two sites currently shown in the plan.
Sure. Okay, so I guess for me, the logical connection as somebody who takes Skytrain and uses Bike Share would be to really integrate this well with the Skytrain station and a comparable sort of separated bike route even. Has there been conversations of that nature with our staff in concert with this master planning? So that you could get off the Skytrain, jump on a bike share, make it to class, that kind of an idea?
We've actually discussed bike route, you know, along 49th and a secondary route, which is, which would be open to the public but really intended for students is to have some of the pedestrian pathways that enter into the campus suitable for bikes as well. And while the bike share program really, you know, that's, like we said, is going to be, you know, discussed and negotiated as per development. There is, there's also a lot of underground and class A parking for people with their own bikes that will be incorporated within the project as well, including increased end-of-trip facilities as.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, as it goes.
Thanks. Counsel Bly.
Great, thank you very much. So I have a couple of questions. One regarding childcare spaces. The city's probably identified a priority of the provision of childcare spaces. And I'm just curious, given that the existing space is 62 spaces, 12 additional childcare spaces, although welcomed and valued, it seems low to me. So I'm just wondering if there's more to know about that.
Applicant?
I'm going to defer this to Wendy Lennard of Langara College.
Thanks so much. Please go ahead.
Mayor, we may have an audio problem. It's definitely time. I just have a few questions.
Lori, I'm glad to handle it as well, if you like.
Okay, yeah, it seems like Wendy's having some audio problems. So if you want to handle that, Steve, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we are experienced designers of child cares. And, you know, when you get above a certain number, it becomes a bit unmanageable. So adding the 12 makes actually for quite a large childcare to be a single entity, to be properly managed. So we're trying to up it to what would make sense as a logical large daycare without it getting kind of beyond control. So we're up to a large, single daycare. Thank you.
Okay, that makes sense. Just wanted to see where the decision was laid. I have a question around the bike path or the proposed bike route on 49th and also on Ontario. So there's a protected bike lane at 49th and Ontario now and I appreciate it only sort of stretches, I think, one block. So is the intent to continue with the same structural setup, but all the way to 52nd? Oh, sorry, that's for staff, I guess. Hi there, this is Tiffany in the rezoning center. Our colleagues in engineering will address that question. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, counselor. This is Lili Somorashida, Senior Transportation and Development Engineer from Transportation. Generally, yes, that is the intention, is to improve some of the existing likely infrastructure that exists on Ontario today. Currently, it was more of a temporary treatment that was added to Ontario and through this application, we would seek to make that more permanent.
Okay, okay, great. And then I'm going to save my second question about the bike lane to the end because I have a second, another question for the applicant is just around the indigenous meeting house. I love this idea. I just wonder if we can get a little more understanding of what programming looks like from the perspective of the applicant and is this part of the public art or in addition to?
Steve, do you want to take this one, please?
Sure. I mean, again, it's not designed at this stage, but it would be seen as a meeting space between the community and the college for multiple uses within the college and for people needing a space for meeting. It will be a simple pavilion in the park. We have Alfred Wa, a local indigenous architect, who has worked on the preliminary studies that you saw. So it'll be a simple, one-story meeting place for multiple, multiple uses.
Okay. I'm not sure. Thank you very much for those answers. If I have a bit more time, I will ask the question of the bike lane or the bike provision for, bike lane provision for West 49th. And just curious, it's a dual carriageway and peak hours. How will it be managed? Going to see that, that street go down to one lane, one lane each way bidirectional. What will that look like? Next to staff.
Steph?
Yeah, thank you for your question. It's Lili Somorashida here from Transportation. 49th Avenue, the bike lane is intended to be raised and fully protected. So it would be separated from motor vehicle traffic. Also, on the note of traffic and operations, we had heard questions about queuing behind buses and there will be space to pass buses as they're stopped to pick up passengers there. There will be adequate travel space for both motor vehicles and protected space for cyclists.
So are we going to lose the dual carriageway during peak hours?
I believe there is a, the buses will stop on the south side of 49th and motor vehicles would be able to pass.
Okay, I'm not clear on that answer. Perhaps, I'm sure I'm getting close to being out of time, but although I just would like a more clear, a clear picture of what exactly that would be.
You have time to ask staff questions after the public speaks, so. Thanks. Okay, Counsel Hardwick, up to five.
Great, thank you very much. I'm interested in understanding the large increase in the student population that was referred to early on the presentation. How much of this is attributable to foreign students and how much is domestic? Can you elaborate?
Applicant team?
Wendy, if your audio is working, can you handle this one?
Can you hear me, sorry?
We can, yes.
You can't hear me, okay. So a large percentage of the growth at Langara, it's been the, when Langara had its original master plan, when the Canada Line came on, we, we had, we had tremendous amount of growth after the Canada Line. So we've just had a tremendous amount of growth, I don't, not sure. Sorry, what was the question again?
The question is the nature of of the growth. There's been significant, a significant development of foreign student growth in all post-secondary institutions in the lower mainland. And I'm, I'm, you've drawn attention to the fact that there's been significant growth at Langara. And I'm trying to understand whether that has been influenced by this large influx of foreign students.
Yeah, Lane, are you able to answer that question?
If I may, Mayor and Councilman, I can answer that question.
The clock is ticking.
Okay, Kim, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, yes. So a great question, Councillor Hardwick, our growth right now of international students. From seven years ago, we went from 1,000 to currently 7,000 students headcount. International students to be particular of our total count of over 21,000 students.
Okay, that's a sign from one to seven, so a multiplier of seven within a reasonably short period of time. Obviously, obviously, the pandemic has had an impact on the foreign student market. All of your students or the majority of your students are studying remotely. Can you shed any light on how the pandemic has affected especially the foreign student market?
In terms of pandemic right now, we, we do have some courses which have to be delivered face to face, either through regulatory means or or because of accreditation or or transfer requirements to study post-secondaries. And that means that at a peak right now, we have up to 800 students on campus, not all at the same time in a day. And that's roughly 5%, the other 95% are studying offline or at home right now. And we do have a number of international students, to your question, who are also studying overseas, who will need to come and complete their education here in Canada following federal guidelines.
In terms of, the reason I'm asking this is you spoke about your projections. There was a question by councillor Frye about whether this should be built larger. And the answer was that there had been a consultant that had done the the growth projections based on a sophisticated analysis. So that's really what I'm trying to understand is is the growth pattern and and how much you see growing internally and and how much from the influence of foreign students.
So in terms of our capacity right now with international students, we are at capacity, we don't see taking any more. And and for a variety of reasons, number one is we want a cultural fit. We want to integrate these students into these Canadian culture. For our domestic students, which is probably your larger question, right now, we've seen a decline in the 18 through 24 cohort, but we start seeing uptick in the next five to six years. As we start seeing the students who are going from K to 12 start coming to us and our other post-secondary institutions in the province. And that's when the demand will be keeping along. We also have seen an uptick because obviously COVID, people are looking to be skilled. I hope that answers your question, your question.
Well, it is, I'm very, I'm very interested in this area, so thank you. And just while we've been talking, I found my old Langara student card from 1977, 78, dating myself.
Our, our foundation will be reaching out to find one of our former Langarres, thank you.
Well, and my husband, who's a student, Studio 58 grad, and my daughter from the fine arts program, so thumbs up.
Thank you. Council, I just, we do have a couple of speakers to this item. If you have questions for staff, you can of course ask them now or after speakers, up to you. I just wanted to remind you of that. And but this is the only time you have to ask the applicant questions. Councillor Kirby, young up to five minutes.
Mayor, I'm going to drop my questions to the applicant. And the first one, maybe I'll switch gears for a bit here. You are located immediately adjacent to Langara Golf Course, which is luckily an Audubon certified art sanctuary and prime habitat for birds and other wildlife. So I'm wondering if you've had any engagement with the Vancouver Park Board with respect to the construction and build out and any impact on the birds or wildlife or mitigation?
Chris Phillips, is this something you can take?
Yeah, I was trying to unmute here, can you hear me?
Muted, yes, we can.
Sorry.
You were unmuted, we can't hear you.
Please go ahead, we do have limited time, so if you can jump in.
I've stopped your clock, councillor.
We, earlier on the process.
You're, you seem to be, you seem to be cutting in and out speakers. Perhaps somebody else from the team can take this.
Or your Steve, can you fill in for Chris on this one?
Um, to be honest, Steve, thank you again. I'm not sure what Chris was going to say about that engagement. But bird protection will be a key part of the design of each building. All the glazing will be treated with bird frit to make sure there's no issues with that habitat from a kind of conflict point of view. But in terms of the engagement, that would have been, Chris, I would also mention that there are several strong connections toward the golf course in, you know, imagining that someday it may evolve and that there's a trail system that connects along it and that connectivity would be important in the future. But I don't have the rest of Chris's answer.
So can, can you hear me now, it's Chris Phillips?
I can, yes, please.
I just want to add, if you have a moment, Mayor Council. We've been looking at a very naturalized landscape approach to the future of the campus lands, including enhancing a wetland and using much more of Indigenous species of planting and naturalizing, which will support a larger habitat, bird habitat context for the park. So I think that's part of the city's ambitions in parks to expand the larger ecology in this neighborhood. And that's our approach.
Thank you very much, glad to hear that. Second question on a different topic, it's just building on the other questions around the student population. Can you just recap succinctly in terms of, you said you're 120% capacity now, but what you will be able to serve in terms of your student population? And is it numbers or is it more in diversity of programs and the building types? Can you just give us a bit of a sense of who the linger, how the linger tomorrow will be different and who it can serve with this renewal?
Lane, can you answer that again, please?
Absolutely, thank you very much. In terms of of our analysis of our space for COVID, we had a shortage of 145,000 square feet for students. With the replacement, another challenge we have is our original building, Building A, opened in 1970. It was built to the building code at the time. And if there is a significant seismic event, we had an engineering study then in 2010. It indicates that that building will likely have a pancake. And so this, this is obviously a concern for us for for life safety for everybody. Moving forward, the the first phase of the, should council approve this? The first phase would be a Building A replacement, which adds on additional square footage over the additional building. And that would allow us to accommodate the additional students. And then the other issues that we deal with is also the type of learning space for students. If you go into Building A, it's, it's a very institutional space, one that reflected the time it was built. Students and programming is very much differently now, we need collaborative space. This new building is where we will be housing our daycare, our social service worker program, our urban childhood education program. And then we will also have our collaborative spaces for applied research with faculty working with the community.
Okay. I'm running out of time, so how many?
You're actually, you've got three seconds, so.
Do you have a number on new students?
Sorry?
Did you have a number on new students?
I think we're, we're past and lots to do tonight, so I'm going to move on to councillor Carr, up to five.
Great, thanks, Mayor. And Chief Councillor Hardwick, I just recently came across my 1977 to 78 faculty, Langara faculty card. I was not even finished my master's degree, but anyway, it was a wonderful place to teach. And now I, so my first question is around, around the childcare. Because I remember even when I was, I taught for 12 years there. And it was so coveted as a place to register, you got pregnant, you put yourself on the waitlist. So there was a long waitlist then, I'm wondering if that's still the case around the childcare? Because it was a fabulous childcare with the early childhood education program. And are you increased, could you possibly increase it to add even more spaces to meet community demand?
Steve, can you respond to this one again, or Lane?
I, I think it probably better for Lane to answer that one.
Okay, thank you. In terms of of looking at the daycare space, whatever we do has got to be based on on what can be done safely for for our, for our learners. To your question though, councillor Carr, we do have a waitlist to get into the program because we charge a lower rate than than the average in Vancouver. And we do track that as part of it. Our priority is always students followed by by employees. And if there are any spots open at that point, we will have, we will open those up to the community and that periodically happens. And we've had many, many employees who've had their kids go through the daycare before they move on to school. So it is the challenge for us is, is how do we do it in a way that we have qualified people and the right learning environment for 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 toddlers?
Yeah. Okay, I totally understand those standards that you're looking to apply. Just if there's any encouragement, it was, it's had an incredible always reputation for for quality. And you're right, affordability. My second question has to do with student housing. It was raised early in the, in the presentation by staff tonight, it's one of the issues that has been raised by the public. And again, when I taught there, it was all, almost all local students who got great quality education at a much lower fee, student fee than enrollment fee than than the universities. But you do have your international students. And I'm wondering if there was at least contemplation of student housing, especially given the international student population?
It's Lane, I'm happy to take that one, councillor Carr. We have looked at housing, we are trying to pursue some other options, partnering with others on that. The reason is that our footprint is very limited at the college and our priority right now is Building A replacement. The other challenge is that if we have to build student housing and we have to make it affordable for students, one of the challenges is how do we do that without making it unaffordable? And so that, that has been one of the things that we've, we've wrestled with. And so we're looking for those affordable options, which may not be on campus, but will be with others who do provide student housing. This is something our board has pushed us on as well, and we're continuing to pursue.
I'm glad you're continuing to pursue, that's, I'm happy to hear that. My final question is around the green building goals that you've got. And I noticed that you're going the, to the low emission goal around green building standards. And I'm wondering if you have contemplated really striving for the most ambitious of targets in terms of near zero or zero emission standards, given that as a public educational institution, there's a, there's a learning opportunity around how you can build buildings to that zero or near zero emission standard that we know all buildings are going to have to achieve, really hopefully sooner rather than later.
Steve, can you take that one, please?
That's absolutely the goal of the master plan, is we realize in, as it gets executed, zero GHGs, net zero are going to be the standard, not the current lead goal that all buildings adhere to. And that's absolutely what the aim of the master plan is.
Oh, it is, okay.
Sorry, councillor Weep, councillor Weep, up to five minutes.
Yeah, first question, in the report, it talks about you becoming a zero waste campus. What goals are you doing to and make that a center of excellence, become a zero waste campus?
Steve again?
I'll defer that one, I think Cory probably has a better, better knowledge of that. And as does Wendy, the, the campus has a very detailed waste program already. And this master plan extends it. But I would say either Wendy or Cory probably can answer it better than. Wendy, do you want to take a shot at that?
And I guess while we wait for Wendy, the other question would be recognizing that you show a plane where a couple of the blue roofs will deliver some of the water. Recognizing we're close to a golf course, is there an opportunity to put all gray water into the natural scape? And then my next question would be either to you or to staff. On the east and west of building B, it looks like really small corridors. And if we try to do interconnected biodiversity corridors, recognizing the green space to the Southier project, is there an opportunity in a future date to increase the corridor size to ensure the biodiversity and natural pathways?
Applicant team.
I'm going to rely on Cory or Steve. Wendy's, Wendy continues to have some technical difficulties.
I think with respect to this last question, it's, I think Chris Phillips is probably best to, to discuss water runoff.
May I, Cory?
Yeah.
Ken. Chris Phillips, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. We have been working to prepare, first of all, integrated stormwater management system that tries to handle as much of the water on site as possible through infiltration and using the existing wetlands. And that's evident on the plan on the whole eastern portion, so that core that runs between the two buildings is part of an ecological kind of corridor that includes vegetation and stormwater to expand a larger, more integrated systems of natural ecology.
I guess my question was, could you expand that to connect to Langara, recognizing that you've got a little space between building B and your building?
Your question is currently under the building program requirements, we haven't allowed for that space. And I have to defer that to the architectural team, but we're very close to, you know, I appreciate there's a very thin connection through, but at the moment, it's not anticipated. I don't know, Steve, you want to respond to that or Cory to the possibility of increasing that corridor to Langara Park?
Yeah, there are, there are two pathways that are allowed that we think are adequate, but they could certainly be increased.
Yeah, currently, they're considered as physical connections to integrate circulation movement to the park. But as Stephen said, we could recontemplate the ability to enhance the ecological value of that as well.
Exactly.
And it'd be great on the zero waste side of it, if down the future. And it'd be great on the zero waste side of it, if down the future road, obviously I've seen some campuses around the world are going to full zero waste, so composters on site and integrated water management system, so it'd be great to see this project really move forward the green agenda and showcase to the rest of us on how it can be done. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions from councillors at the moment, so we're now going to move to hear from the public, if you'd like to speak to this item, 1-833-353-8610, 15917, hashtag to get on the list, and we do have some registered speakers, council. The first speaker, registered speaker is Tony Ditmars. Looking for Tony Ditmars. If I could ask all other speakers to mute, so we don't have noise in the background. Staff and council, thank you. Tony Ditmars.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, okay, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and councillors, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Tony Ditmars, I live on 52nd Avenue, half a block east of Ontario, house number 55. I'm opposed to the report's recommendations because I object to the parking lot of a university emptying into a residential neighborhood, which happens at the southeast entrance to the campus at Ontario and 51st. And I don't think that the plans to curb this traffic are firm enough. I've lived at my address for 35 years through a number of college expansions, and every time there's an open house, the planners make, they suggest that there will be efforts made to curb the traffic out of this entrance, but nothing ever changes. I was told that Ontario would be closed off to vehicles between 51st and 52nd. I was told that the southeast entrance would be for service vehicles only, neither of which happened. All that's been done is to put a traffic barrier at 51st and Ontario, and this only diverts traffic into the alleyway between 51st and 52nd, which my house backs onto, and also onto 52nd Avenue. At the July 19 open house, the southeast entrance was marked as a service entrance. When I asked staff at the open house for clarification on what that meant, nobody, none of the city or college staff could provide an explanation of what that actually meant. The current city webpage artist rendering shows that the southeast entrance is apparently only accessible by southbound traffic on Ontario, with no mention of it being a service entrance. And yet, in Table 7.1 of your Transportation Assessment Management Study, projections are made of a 20% increase in traffic at this entrance, both north and southbound, incoming and outgoing, with no mention of efforts made to control it. Much of that traffic will end up in the alley behind my house and on 52nd Avenue. So in conclusion, I would urge the city to identify how they will control traffic from this entrance and protect our neighborhood before proceeding further with the redevelopment. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in this evening, I don't see any questions from council for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much. The next speaker, council, is Helen Nichols, speaker number five, Helen Nichols.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
I sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening to the Mayor and Vancouver City Council and staff. My name is Helen Nichols, and I registered under the opposed category to the current plan, as I understand it. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share my opinion and observation on the proposed amendments to Langara College Master Development Plan. I appreciate that the college and the neighborhood coexist. I respect the vibrancy that the college brings and the important educational function the college serves, but suggests that it is important to balance the needs of the college and those of the residents who choose to make this area their home. My first point is around the proposed building height and location of Subarea 1. I'm a resident who lives across the street from the college in Ontario Street, and while I appreciate the college has additional space requirements, I find it curious that the suggested location to construct would be one of the largest buildings in the redevelopment envelope, up to six stories, is across from residential homes, which they themselves are not zoned beyond the traditional zoning. I'm also concerned about the increased shade from the buildings when residents are trying to enjoy their yards and the lack of privacy from six stories above my house, with what I estimate to be about 80 feet separating the two. Could the envelope be reconfigured and reimagined? Could the location of the larger buildings be considered at the other side of the campus, next to the park that straddles the YMCA and seems to be rather infrequently used? I walk in the area often, and even when school's in session, I rarely see the green space known as Commons Field, which runs along West 49th Hughes. Could any of these areas be considered for the largest and the larger buildings? And while protecting the green space and place it along Ontario Street, if a building has to be built along Ontario, can it be one of the smaller buildings or look to subgrade? With respect to overall densification and finding a balance, I want to share a few experience and comments on being a good neighbor related to garbage, parking and noise. Densification results in more garbage, which is frequently blown onto Ontario Street and caught in the bike barricades. Parking when students return is challenging, as many people accessing the college park in resident-only zones, which makes it difficult for the residents themselves to park near their home, especially elderly residents. This problem will be intensified. Anecdotally, pre-COVID, we enjoyed a jackhammer across the street digging up concrete in the college parking lot until late in the evening around 11:00 PM during the week. When my husband went to inquire, the contractor was very gracious and stopped, however, the next evening it continued. How will the college address a long construction schedule over the course of many years, during which one would assume would need to be done when classes are not in session? And my last observation is around traffic. Ontario is designated as a traffic-commed bike route. Pre-COVID, traffic is very busy, Monday through Saturday is a community also access of college space when classes are not in session. That's a very positive endeavor. However, traffic in Ontario can be like a parking lot, and I worry somebody's going to get hurt or worse because of the overcrowding on what is supposed to be a traffic-comed street. There are bike barricades, which we understand were supposed to be temporary while the Science Building was built, but continue to be in place despite not always being accessed, which makes for a tighter road for vehicles and bicycles to share. When you protect only two blocks, very few use it. While I registered in the opposed category, it is opposed to how the plan is presented now. Like most things, the truth lies somewhere in between, and I'm a realist, I assume some development will take place. I've lived in the area for 16 years, I've raised my family here, I want to stay here, I don't want to live across from a six-story building. I appreciate your consideration of my comments and observations. I look forward to a solution that addresses the needs of the college and the needs of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in this evening, I don't see any questions for you, so, oh, councillor Carr, there you go, up to five minutes.
Yes, thanks. Did you determine that it was six stories from looking at plans or the open house? I'm just wondering where you got the six stories from?
But the, well, the open house and the card and the poster, and also looking on the site, along Ontario, there is four stories and six stories and four stories, as I understand the plan.
Yeah, you know, I will follow up with questions, but I'm reading in the report that Facing Ontario will be a four-story building with a two-story wall at the street with significant screening of existing trees. So I will follow up that question, I was just wondering where you got the information of six stories, because I'm not reading that in this report, but I will follow that up, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions. And just want to thank you for calling in this evening. So council, I'm going to now call the first time, if there's any other speakers who'd like to speak to this item, 1-833-353-8610, code 15917, hashtag to get on the list. And ask the clerks, is there anybody on the line for this item?
No, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you. And I'm going to call, I'm obligated to call three times, so I will call a second time. The number has been tweeted out, and it's available on the live stream. Just going to check clerks before I call the third time, is there anybody on the line?
No, Mayor Stewart.
Great, thanks. So I'm going to call the third time for speakers on this item, and council, it is 7:20 on my clock, so we'll come back at 7:25 to resume this item. Thanks. Five, so I'm just going to check and see if there's anybody else calling in for this item?
Mayor Stewart, yes, we do have one new speaker.
Okay. Speaker, could you, could you say your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver?
Hi, my name is Alena Sainte-More, and I am a resident of Vancouver.
Great, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Great, thanks. So I'm actually a current student at Langara College, and I'm also a reporter with the Langara Voice. My question is, what will the rezoning and construction mean for students, especially ones who are on, who are studying during the construction? Will they still have all the same access as normal, and if they don't, what will it look like?
Right, thank you very much for calling into this, and so in this portion of the public hearing, we're here to listen to speakers, which would be you, and to not, so we don't answer questions from the public or the media in this, what is a quasi judicial process, kind of like a court hearing, really. And so what can happen, though, is that the councillors can listen to your questions, and if they feel they warrant their, they warrant merit, they can ask staff. And so that's, that's kind of where we're in the process, so we're just here to listen to what you have to say about this project, whether you oppose it or support it. And, yeah, so is that?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, I think you have a question from councillor Bly. Councillor Bly?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank the speaker for calling in, it's really important to hear from the students of the school of course, and we have the ability to ask staff questions. So I just wanted you to know that your question's been heard, and I'm happy to ask that, the impact of students during any additional development.
Great, thanks so much. And that's it for, for speakers. So council, we, we're going to close the speakers list now, actually, I'll check with the clerks, is there anybody else on the line?
No, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, so I'm going to close the speakers list, and then council, we, because we haven't had any correspondence after 5:00 PM today, we're going to close the receipt of comments, and now move to the applicant. Applicant, do you have any closing comments?
No, we, we just want to thank Mayor and council for this opportunity, and we'll be available to answer any further questions or comments you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Staff, have any closing comments?
No further comments, thank you.
Okay, and I've got, now, council, you can ask questions to the staff, so I've got councillor Carr on first in the queue, up to five minutes. Councillor Carr?
Great, thank you. I will let councillor Bly, who's on the list, can she express interest in asking the questions raised by the students, so I'll leave that aside. But I did want to ask a question of staff regarding, several speakers actually raised concerns around the Ontario Facing development, and concern around the density there, but, or the height there. So my, one speaker talked about it being a six-story wall and was concerned about the shadowing. My read of the document, as I noted, was that it's a four-story along Ontario with a two-story street wall with significant screening with trees. So could you please comment and give me an answer on that? What is the height of the building, buildings along Ontario? What are the, is there a dropdown? Is there screening with trees in order to avoid, and what is the shadowing impact of the buildings on that Ontario Facing side?
Thank you. This is Susan Chang, Development Planner. That is correct. It is a six-story building. Any, all six-story portions are centrally located on the site with significant setbacks from the property line. So the six-story portion is set back 85 feet from the property line. However, the predominant building form that will be perceived at the street level is four stories, stepping down incrementally to two stories. And you are correct, there will be mature trees and tree groupings that will be retained that will provide a buffer. Additionally, there is no shadow impacts to the property across the street.
Okay, great, so it is a six-story. And when you say it perceived as four stories, what do you mean by that? And when you say projected two-story street wall, what does that mean in terms of, why should it look only two stories? Is it, you could say it stepped? Is it, you can say it's stepped down?
Yes, okay. So as perceived from the street level, it will be a predominantly four-story building. And, and the reason being that the six-story portions are significantly set back from the street. The two-story portions are, are intended to provide articulated elements so that it reduces the, it minimizes the length, the frontage, the building frontage, it articulates it, as well as opportunities to retain trees.
Okay, so the whole building, the, the actual big building itself is six stories, but it is stepped down, and there is no shadowing, and there are mature trees. Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Good, thank you. That's my only major question, thank you.
Thanks so much. Next is councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I wanted to follow up on the question from one of the speakers with, with respect to the egress and in and out of the parking lot on Ontario. And I know it's gonna be eleven hundred spaces, and there was concern expressed from one of the local residents in terms of that potentially, quote, dumping into the alley, just paraphrasing. And I wonder if staff can speak to, clarify the actual flow, and if there's any mitigation measures in place in terms of traffic flow coming out of, out of the parking lot, given the residential area that it's exiting into?
Yes, hi, thank you. Thank you for your question. This is Lisa Morashida from Transportation. Vehicle access will be available from Ontario opposite East Fifty-first Avenue. The goal is to reinforce that the signalized intersection at Forty-Ninth and Columbia is the primary principal vehicle entrance to the campus, and that entrance from Ontario providing secondary access only. In terms of loading, loading management plan, there will be a loading management plan required, and that will show that all loading access will be from that primary signalized intersection at Columbia and Forty-Ninth. The passenger vehicles will be allowed to, to access the campus from that Ontario driveway. Drivers should not be shortcutting through the neighborhood using alleyways. The, the right-in, right-out diverter at Ontario and Fifty-first was intended to protect the neighborhood, but improvements on Ontario, including widened sidewalks and protected bike lanes, raised protected bike lanes, should signal to drivers that Ontario was a place for bikes and not be shortcutting through the neighborhood.
Okay, and follow up to that, when you said that the main entrance signal to be off of Columbia are sign, and signal not just through those measures you've described in terms of the bike, the bike lane and others on Ontario, but is, do you mean through signage? Like, how was that signaled through the actual design in terms of how people are guided into campus signage? Can you just expand on that a bit?
Access to the campus should be from as close to arterials as possible. In this case, that closest access is from Forty-Ninth and Columbia. In terms of shortcutting through the neighborhood?
So if somebody's in the parking lot, they've entered, let's say they're coming along, they're heading to Langara, they're in a vehicle, they come off that main entrance off of Forty, coming off the arterial, is there anything once you're in the parking lot that directs them back onto the arterial as opposed to exiting in that secondary exit on Ontario? How does that function?
That design would be finalized through development permit.
Okay, so those concerns could be addressed, just to be clear for sort of, you know, residents in the area that have raised this, those concerns could be, now they've been flagged and brought up, could be considered in the, in the arcade design, as when we get to that level of specificity? Is that right?
That's right. Also, in terms of efficiency, drivers will, it will be more efficient for drivers to access, both access and egress from the campus using Columbia and Forty-Ninth. Going to Ontario, Ontario is supposed to be for people walking in for biking. It will be more efficient for people to access using Columbia and Forty-Ninth.
Okay, thanks. And then a follow-up question to the one I asked earlier of the applicant, really with respect to recognizing the unique Audubon-certified habitat that's very friendly to birds and other wildlife. Are staff quite satisfied with the measures with respect to native plantings, greening throughout the site, and others in the context of, to the environmental considerations?
Thank you, council. Cynthia Lau here from the Rezoning Centre. Yes, staff have provided information and worked with the applicant as part of the design guidelines, and this will be further reviewed through the development permit process as we see more detailed drawings to this application. There's also information on improvements to the wetland and the existing wetland currently on site will be preserved and remediated.
Okay, and with full public access to that wetland area and the green space?
There will be.
Okay, thanks. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Councillor Bly, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of follow-up questions. Related to the parking concerns base, and just wondering, what is the additional capacity proposed compared to what, because there's quite a large surface parking lot there now. I'm just, I miss it, might have missed that in the reports, the, the increase in capacity in parking with this proposal?
Hi there, thank you for your question. Lisa Morashida from Transportation. Parking is actually not intended, not expected to be increased through this?
Okay, that's good. I, I thought so, but I just wanted to double-check. And so also, Lisa, maybe you could help me understand, and I appreciate the sort of egress and design to mitigate any impacts in the neighborhood regarding the parking lot. But I do note that the, the plan will suggest, will suggest that vehicles coming in and out will also be crossing a new bike lane on Forty-Ninth. So just to understand more about how that is proposed, and whether or not that's been identified at this stage of the proposal?
So the crossing at Forty-Ninth is intended to be fully signalized, including the bike crossing. So the movements for cyclists on Forty-Ninth and the movements for motor vehicles accessing Langara College should be separated?
Okay, got it. And so to be clear, is there any, what I'm trying to understand is during peak hours, that's an extremely busy artery to get sort of from Cambie to Main and across to the east side. And I'm just wondering how traffic management team have looked at this application, and what impacts there will be, understanding that there is a Skytrain station right there, and, you know, bike lane, and ideally, less cars will be traveling, but just to understand more about the, the impact, since that was sort of the primary concern raised by the public?
Certainly. So the, the current operations on, on Forty-Ninth are intended to remain generally consistent over time. The improvements at Forty-Ninth and Columbia include a westbound left turn lane, so it will be that much more convenient for vehicles traveling westbound to access Langara College. And again, that separation for motor vehicle movements and pedestrians and cyclists will improve traffic safety at that intersection.
Okay, okay. And then just in, I appreciate that. And then in the context of the question of the speaker, who was a student of Langara, and I realize we don't have the applicant on, so you may not be able to fully answer this question, but just wondering, in consideration of a active campus and learning and things like that with students' needs, I wonder if staff have any insight into how the sort of fulsome plan being realized impacts their learning experience?
Hi, council. As part of any development in that phase like this, we'll work with the staff as part of their development permit process, and as they move into construction management, construction access and revisions would be reviewed by staff during the time of construction and their building permit works. I would expect that the first phase is likely to be on the existing parking lot as, as to have disruption to the students, and that's what's been conveyed to staff thus far.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Fry, up to five.
You know, I, I think my questions were largely covered there. I'm just, I just want some clarity, though, that there is contemplation from the city to complete sort of an east-west cycle connection between Cambie and Main Street, and especially those transit routes. So I see it on the, on the, on the map for this master plan. I'm just seeking some kind of confirmation that there will be a larger cycling connection between Main and Cambie.
Steph?
Thank you for your question, councillor. Yes, generally, there are plans to extend the bike lanes beyond the frontage of this development application.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Thanks so much. Councillor Carr, I see you on the list. About a minute and a half left on your question time.
Yeah, actually, I just found the answer to my question, but I, yeah, just, but I, to move the recommendations.
Sure, there's no one on the queue, so, yep.
I'm happy to second, Mayor. Councillor Boyle?
Okay, great. So I'm gonna move us to a debate queue. Let's move by councillor Carr, seconded by councillor Boyle. I'm gonna clear this queue. Anybody want to say anything about this? Okay, councillor Bly on, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep it brief, as we've got a number of applications tonight. I just wanted to speak in support of the application. I had the pleasure of attending this school as a, dare I say it, mature student with an eleven-year-old and a six-year-old at the time, and it was pretty great to be in a college experience with, with actually eighteen- and nineteen-year-olds in my class, believe it or not. It was amazing. Everybody wanted me in their group. So it was a real treat. I think that the low sort of barrier approach to the, the school itself lends to wanting more students to be able to attend, and they were very much at capacity when I was there, and that was about six or seven years ago. So, yeah, I said speak in support. I think the additional childcare spaces are important, and I appreciate the balance of making sure that a, a large operation can still run effectively, and appreciated the answer from the applicant. The Indigenous Meeting House, open to the community for, for use, I imagine could bring a lot of benefit. There's a ton of events that are held in the front lawns of the school right now, and there is that corner that's actually often underutilized in my memory. So I think that that's great, a great addition. And, you know, I think with the Skytrain as close to it as it is, it's, I think, maybe just two blocks and very well-used. The addition of the infrastructure for the bikes, which I also use a lot, actually makes a lot of sense in that area. And it sounds to me like staff have really planned to manage the traffic flow and even improve it with a left-hand turn lane heading westbound. So happy to support and look forward to seeing this proposal realized in the future.
Thanks so much. We've got councillor Boyle.
Thanks, Mayor. And I also, just briefly, also wanted to say that I'm quite happy to support this proposal, and wanted to say a big thank you and congratulations to the whole team at Langara that's been working on it. This is an exciting development. Langara plays a really important role in the city, and so delighted to see it continue to grow and meet the needs of more students, including through this expansion.
Great. Thanks councillor Boyle. Councillor Carr?
Yeah, as I say, I, I had taught there, my first teaching job, and it was a fabulous place to work, so it's pretty exciting. It's been, it's been, you know, way too many years, but exciting to see this expansion and to see the, the enrollments at the college, university, sorry, it was a college when I was there, the university, actually grow over time. And, and obviously, the need is there. The demand is there, the need is there to expand. I noted that this is a twenty-five-year build-out, and I, you know, it did have, it has had extensive parking lots, even more back when I was teaching there. Happy to see that those, that surface parking lot spaces what is going to get utilized. Very happy to see the expansion and the childcare, and I understand the limitations that were explained because of, that it is integrated with the early childhood education program, but, you know, anything that could be done around that is a fabulous, just unbelievable childcare program there. Regarding the sort of height, density setbacks, I'm happy to have staff answer that question of mine, and reading in the conditions of approval that there are significant setbacks, eighty-five feet, sort of the perception of scale in the local neighborhood is going to be quite minimal. Stepping down as well, no shadowing impact. And so that, I think, is, is good in terms of neighborhood fit. Regarding landscaping, mature trees are very significant. There is a, a condition of approval that talks about retention of, of trees, and so I think that's important. And more than that, though, I was really intrigued in the condition of approval, conditions of approval, to hear the focus on, on not just the mature trees, but actually landscaping as a whole. And that includes not only on the borders, but even in the inside, and included even urban agriculture and, and indigenous plant, plantings. And regarding that, some real attention to that, not only the Indigenous Meeting House, but in terms of reconciliation, this sort of celebration of Indigenous language with interpretive signs and Indigenous art, public art throughout the, throughout the campus. And I think this is, is a great vision. So I am, as I say, really pleased to move this and to support it.
Thanks councillor Carr. And that's it for speakers, so I'm gonna bring us to a vote. Councillor Fry?
Mayor, I might need a vote assist, actually, if I'm kicked off the, can I vote in favor, please?
Yes, we'll get that recorded by the clerks. Okay, council, that has passed unanimously. Thank you to the applicant and staff team, and those who called in this evening. And we're gonna move on to the next item. Okay, council, we are moving on to item number two, which is the extension of rental house, housing stock official, official development plan to require rental replacement C2, C-dash 2B, C-dash 2C, C-dash 2C1, commercial districts. Any councillors wish to declare conflict of interest on this item? I don't hear any, so I'm gonna get the clerk to read the application and summary correspondence.
I have one point of privilege before we begin.
Sure.
I'm just wondering, given that we're halfway through our scheduled time tonight, I know you said that we won't get to item four. I'm wondering at this point, when will we be able to make a call on item three? Because I know there's a lot of speakers for this item, and I'm just thinking it might be unlikely that we get to that, that will point?
Well, it does, it does all depend on, council, I was, after the application was read, going to suggest, since there is no actual applicant, this is a staff proposal. We do have two rounds of questions to staff. Councillors could hold their questions, kind of skip the first round, the first opportunity, hear from, hear from the public, and then save questions until the, until after the public. That would save some time, but again, this is, this is up to council, how long this takes.
Okay, I just wonder, I just, I'm, I'm just anticipating that we may not get to item three tonight, so just flagging that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Great. So, so the clerk can read the application, please.
Point of privilege, mister?
Yes, councillor Dejanova?
I'm on the queue.
Well, there's no queue at the moment, so.
Oh, no, I, I just, if you had mentioned there's this opportunity to move a motion, if I could also ask, I guess, as a point of parliamentary procedure?
Sure.
Just as a follow-up to councillor Kirby Young's point of parliamentary procedure, I'm just wondering if, if it's possible to move to just hear from speakers on the items tonight, and not have debate and decision, and move that to unfinished business at the regular council meeting? Just noting that we have a number of speakers, and then we can hear from as many speakers as possible tonight?
Well, it's not a bad thought, but it may be a little premature, because we do have over two hours right now, and if we get to it, we can just see how, how we do, and then we might need a motion later. So.
Okay.
We do, I mean, it is quasi judicial, so we do have to kind of take it step by step for each application as it, as it sits. So, so that's kind of where we are at the moment. So I'll, I'll get the clerks to read the application. So, um, I'll, I'll get the clerks to read the, uh, application.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the rental housing stock official development plan to extend the requirement for one-for-one replacement of existing rental housing units to the C2, C2B, C2C, and C2C1 zoning districts. The rental housing stock ODP currently requires rental replacement in new developments comprising, comprising three or more units in certain RM, FM, and CD1-zoned areas in the city. This amendment will further protect the existing rental housing stock by expanding the rental housing stock ODP requirements to these other districts. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Seven pieces of correspondence in support, eighteen pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to five thirty today.
Great, thanks so much. Um, sorry, I'm just, uh, checking here. Okay, so are there any speakers who want to speak to this item? One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero fifteen nine one seven is the hashtag, is to get on the list. We have Ed Natcho, Senior Housing Planner, uh, here to walk us through a fairly lengthy PowerPoint presentation, counsel, so, um, it's about thirty-three slides, so, um, we'll go through the presentation, and then hopefully we get to the public as soon as possible. Thanks so much, and over to Ed Natcho.
Hi, before I start, um, can you, can everyone hear me and see the screen?
Yes, we can, and I'll just make sure that it's on the public, uh. Yep, we're good to go.
Okay, great. So, good evening. I'm Ed Natcho, Senior Planner in Housing Policy and Regulation. Um, and we're here with an application from the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to extend the rental housing stock official development plan to C2-zoned areas. This presentation will go over the background and summary of recommendations, results of our engagement, as well as a summary of issues. Terms of the background. The rental housing stock ODP is a bylaw that requires one-for-one replacement of existing rental units on any new developments proposing three or more residential units, and it covers most apartment areas, so that's the majority of the RM, FM, and CD1 zones in the city, shown in the gray on the map. The ODP covers seventy-seven percent of the city's rental housing stock and is our greatest tool in preventing the loss of the existing rental stock. As you can see, the ODP has been in place since nineteen eighty-nine, when we were losing upwards of four hundred units a year, and now, thirty years later, we're losing significantly less. So why were C2 zones not included in the rental housing stock ODP originally? Going back, the one-for-one rental replacement provision in the ODP was significantly expanded by council in two thousand and seven. At that time, there was significant redevelopment pressure on older apartment buildings in multifamily areas of the city, leading to loss of rental and displacement of renters. You can see here in this pie chart, the blue and orange segments are the apartment zones, and they contain the vast majority, so that approximately eighty percent of the city's purpose-built rental housing stock. So it was recognized that a one-for-one rental replacement requirement at that time would have a dampening effect and slow down the rate of development in those areas. Commercial areas were not originally included in the rental housing stock ODP because they contained significantly less existing purpose-built rental, four percent compared to the apartment areas. So over time, this has meant that development and growth has been explicitly focused in commercial areas and along arterials as the opportunities were minimized in the RM, FM apartment areas, and few opportunities existed for new housing in low-density areas of the city. We received new direction from council recently arising from their concern for tenants and the impacts of displacement caused by redevelopment. Council has directed staff to extend the rental housing stock ODP to commercial areas a number of times over the last two years. Twice in twenty nineteen, when we brought forward the Secure Rental Policy, and again in July of last year, when council referred the C2-six-story rental work back to staff until this work on the ODP was completed. So today's council report is an application from the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the rental housing stock ODP to include the C2, C2B, C2C, and C2C1 zoning districts, as well as consequential amendments to the zoning and development bylaw and the strata title and cooperative conversion guidelines. And this is a map of the C2 zones, shown in red, um, that are proposed to be added to the rental housing stock ODP. This next section provides a summary of the engagement we conducted over the fall of twenty twenty. We carried out engagement through a variety of means, through our website, uh, which we received over six thousand five hundred visits, two separate surveys to the general public and to the property owners, which had, um, four hundred responses, and through a series of stakeholder meetings with the Renters Advisory Committee, the Business Improvement Areas, the Urban Design, the, the Urban Development Institute, and financial lenders. In terms of how we notified, we utilized our email lists, conducted social media advertising, and three separate mailouts to property owners. In total, our notification had a reach of over twenty-five thousand people. In terms of what we heard, we found a very big difference in response depending on whether you're a renter or property owner. We heard lots of support from renters. Seventy-five percent agree with extending the ODP compared to property owners, in which ninety-two percent disagreed with the proposal. From renters, they expressed the need for stronger tenant protection to prevent displacement, particularly of low-income residents. They talked about the need to protect the existing older rental, which can be much more affordable than new rental. We also heard concerns about the pace of redevelopment and the difficulty of finding anything in the market at the same rent if tenants are displaced. We also did hear from some renters that they are more amenable to redevelopment if it were for new rental and not for ownership housing. From property owners, they are most concerned about the reduction in land value and feel it is highly punitive and cite that there has been no net loss in rental units in these areas. Others feel the proposed policy disproportionately affects small-scale property owners who don't have the capital to absorb the devaluation. And finally, this change with slow redevelopment because it negatively impacts their ability to secure financing for projects. In terms of stakeholders, uh, we met with the Renters Advisory Committee, who were highly supportive of the policy proposal, and also wanted to ensure that the long-term maintenance of rental is a priority. Uh, we spoke to representatives at the Urban Development Institute. They are in opposition to these amendments. They're concerned that projects will no longer be able to secure financing, um, due to the property value reduction. This will slow down development in commercial areas without compensation, and that this change adds another layer of cost and complexity to an already expensive and lengthy process. We also heard from financial institutions, and they told us from a lending perspective, the change will have a negative impact on future and current loans and financing schemes. They would perceive Vancouver as a risky place to develop in light of the longstanding policies to encourage development in these areas, which would impact the amount of loans they provide. We also heard that this would severely impact owners who have just purchased sites in C2 and secured arrangements based on existing policy, um, and this could result in the foreclosure of properties if they are no longer viable. So that concludes, um, a summary of the engagement. Uh, let's move on to the analysis and summary of issues. So first, let's look at affordability and rents in C2 areas. So if you look at the pie chart on the left, it's showing that the vast majority, so sixty percent of the rental in C2 areas, were constructed prior to nineteen seventy-five. And according to CMHC Rand Information at the city level, shown in the bar graph on the right, we know that the average rents of units constructed prior to nineteen seventy-five tend to be about forty percent lower than rents in newer rental buildings, uh, constructed since tw- twenty eighteen. So the rental that is there now in C2 is much more affordable than newer rental units. How many sites will be impacted by the proposed change? So within the C2 areas, here's a map that shows the sites that have existing rental that would be affected by these changes. Um, they're depicted in red on the map. There's three hundred and seventy-six sites, which accounts for fifteen percent of total sites in C2. And it's about three thousand existing rental units. So overall, C2 accounts for four percent of the city's, um, rental stock. And if the recommendations in the report tonight are approved, the ODP would apply to eighty-one percent of the city's, uh, purpose-built rental stock, up from seventy-seven percent currently. How much rental ha- have we been losing in C2 areas? So this is a chart that shows loss and gain by rental, uh, of rental by zone in the city. C2 is depicted by the first column highlighted in yellow on the left. In terms of how much rental we've lost in C2, you can see here that since twenty ten, we've lost eighty units, so that's about eight units a year, but have gained, um, about seven hundred. So overall, there's been a net gain of about six hundred units in C2. In terms of the types of development that will be impacted by the proposed change, it's the projects proposing strata ownership that will be impacted. And as you can see here, over the last ten years, the vast majority of projects in C2, uh, three-quarters of them have been strata. Uh, there isn't, um, an impact necessarily to rental projects, and that's because any new one-hundred-percent rental projects would more than replace the existing rental onsite and will be fulfilling the ODP requirements regardless of whether we extended it to C2 areas or not. As part of this work, we conducted economic testing to measure the impact of requiring rental replacement on existing land values and redevelopment potential in C2 areas. We contracted with Coriolis Consulting, who looked at three areas of the city, east side, west side, and mid-Vancouver. In terms of findings, overall, there are a number of factors that impact land values. The number of existing rental units onsite matters, so the more existing units that are required to be replaced, the higher the financial impact. Our tenant relocation policy and the right of first refusal provision at twenty percent below market is important. The more returning tenants, the higher, um, to the cost of the project. The location is another factor. There's a higher impact on higher-value west side, west side sites compared to the east side. In addition, the scale of development matters, as well as the value of the existing building, and whether the income generated is higher than its value as a redevelopment site are important factors as well. But let's take a look at an illustrative example in the east side. The green dotted line at the top represents the current state, so that's the land value of a redevelopment site at two-point-five FSR for strata with no rental replacement. The dark blue bars represent the land, the residual land value, so what the property is worth at its existing use as a commercial building with a few units of rental on top. And the pink bar represents the impact on land values as a result of adding rental replacement requirements. So in the east side, the impact of land value, depending on the site size, number of existing rental units, is a reduction of between eight to thirty-three percent. So it's a loss of six hundred and six, uh, six hundred and sixty thousand to two-point-six million in value. You can see here rental replacement has a greater impact on sites that have more existing rental units. So this is the typical scenario. We also considered a high-impact scenario based on financial, uh, lending perspective. When we met with financial institutions, they explained that they always assume the most conservative or highest-impact scenario when they do their underwriting. And this scenario primarily has to do with the city's tenant relocation and protection policy. So for sites that have existing tenants, lenders assume that all tenants return and stay in perpetuity, um, because that's what our policy allows. So in this scenario, the impact is a reduction of land value between eleven to fifty-one percent, so approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand to about four million per site. So the results are similar in the west side as well as mid-Vancouver, but shows an even greater reduction in land value. So in summary, landowners can expect an impact ranging from ten to thirty percent reduction on their existing land value. Assuming the highest-impact scenario, the impact would increase, resulting in a ten to fifty percent reduction. Uh, so this translates to a loss of about seven hundred thousand to five million on the individual sites tested. Um, one thing to note is that even with the current context, no rental replacement requirements, there are lots of sites that aren't redevelopment candidates as the existing value as commercial site is worth more than redevelopment. But overall, the proposed changes will result in a significant reduction of development in these areas. The next few slides are about implementation. So the vast majority of sites in C2 have small numbers of existing rental, so eighty percent have less than ten units. Through implementa- through implementation in other areas of the city, we know it's challenging to secure a small number of rental units within a larger mixed-use strata development. In order to guarantee security of tenure, we typically require multiple airspace parcels, which are costly, but also have, it has impacts on the long-term operation and management of the building. We also know it can be difficult to secure a buyer or an operator for just a small handful of rental units. So to address these challenges, we will be relaxing our airspace parcel practices in some instances for projects with a small number of rental replacements. So, and we will instead be securing the rental units through housing agreements, so owners cannot occupy or sell them as individual stratas. We were also asked to address the impact on existing in-stream applications that are going through the development process currently. We will continue to process existing in-stream development or rez- or rezoning applications under the current requirements of the ODP. We will also grandfather rezoning inquiries that have resulted in a positive letter of response from the city dated between May first, twenty nineteen, um, and February ninth, twenty twenty-one, provided that a rezoning application is submitted within six months of the date of enactment of the amended changes. In terms of future work by staff, as directed by council last July, we are intending to bring back the C2-six-story rental zoning work to enable projects to be processed through a development permit rather than a rezoning. It's a more straightforward option in terms of implementation for property owners who are intending to redevelop. So in summary, C2 areas contain four percent of the city's rental stock, and rental replace, rental replacement of any existing units will now be required if the rental housing stock ODP were extended to these areas. For landowners with existing rental, which is about fifteen percent of sites in C2, the economic testing shows an estimated reduction of land value ranging from ten to fifty percent. Extending the ODP will significantly slow the pace of strata development within C2 areas on these sites with existing rental. For renters, extending the ODP will help to preserve the existing affordability of the older rental, which has rents about forty percent lower than newer rental, and prevent the displacement of tenants, of tenants from redevelopment. So, thank you. Um, staff and our consultant, Blair Herb from Coriolis Consulting, will be available to answer questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation, uh, counsel. Just a reminder, there is no applicant to, uh, to this, uh, to this report. Sorry, I'm just pulling up my, uh, so, uh, we can ask questions now, and then hear from the public and ask questions again, or we could just, uh, move to hearing from the public and then.
So I'd like to move, um, Mayor, Mayor Stewart, I'm on the speaker's list, I think. I'd like to move that we, uh, uh, refer the opportunity for council to ask questions, as well as, can you hear me?
Yeah, there are only, there's you and Counselor Swanson on the list, so we could, uh, I'm not, I would have to check if we can actually waive this part of the, uh, process or.
I think we can move directly to speakers, that was my understanding. That's what I'd like to move, and then refer debate and decision to, um, the appropriate date as, as you and the clerks see fit. Which I would assume would probably be April, council, regular unfinished business.
Actually, we have to, uh, close the speakers' list first, and we may not get to that this evening, so I can't, we can't defer debate and decision until we've actually closed the speakers' list officially.
Okay, I, I thought we've done, i- if you don't mind, as a point of parliamentary presentation, we've all done that before. We just have to close the speakers' list. Like at some point in one of our backup dates, either.
Yep, so I think we have enough time to get through the, uh, speakers' list this evening. We could, uh, close the speakers' list and then have council ask questions then. That's what I'd suggest, as we only have, uh, Counselor Swanson seems to have a question, but other than, then we get right into that.
Well, I have questions too, but I, I have, probably have five minutes worth of questions, and I was planning on moving another round if I didn't get through them, so, um, in the interest of the public.
Oh, you can go ahead. You're on the, you're on the, uh.
Is that all right? Great.
Go ahead and ask your questions, yeah.
I'll just go straight to questions, but then at what point do we move, um, to refer debate and decision?
We do that after we've closed the speakers' list.
Okay, all right. So, uh, thank you. Um, my questions to staff are, first of all, I very much appreciate this. Uh, really, uh, appreciate all of the information about the financial implications, but also the fact that, that, uh, you know, there's a significant, there's significant communities that would be impacted, and I'm wondering if, um, if staff could maybe comment on, you know, for instance, nonprofit operators that, uh, may own or operate housing or services on a C2 site. Um, is that a concern? I just didn't see that specifically outlined in the referral report. I knew I would have a chance to ask about that public hearing.
Uh, yes, so this is Ed Natcho, Senior Planner, um, Housing Policy and Regulations. Uh, so for nonprofits that are in. So for nonprofits that are intending to, you know, read, if they own sites in C two and are intending to redevelop, they wouldn't be necessarily impacted by this proposal because they would presumably be redeveloping to more social housing or rental. So I think, you know, existing nonprofits, I don't think would be impacted by this.
So I specifically was referring to, my understanding is this policy specifically talks about C two zoning, so C two zone. But if there are a number of other policies we have that currently wouldn't be allowed possibly onsite. So let's say the zoning had changed and areas were downzoned, you know, since, since the time that the housing units came online, market or non-market, could we actually see ourselves? And I think I asked this question at council some time ago. Could we actually see ourselves in a situation where they would be required to build more units than they were actually allowed under the zoning to, for a replacement?
I think that would depend on the, the situation. You know, typically nonprofits, if they wanted to redevelop.
It's not just nonprofits, I was also wondering about, as I mentioned, market and non-market housing in that case.
Okay, well, in terms of non-market, like rental, rental housing onsite, the median units of rental are, there's usually, it's, C two has a small number of rental units in the existing buildings. The median is five units per site. So, you know, usually anything that's, that's wants to redevelop to something higher would, you know, they, under our rezoning policies, they can go up to six stories. But you're right, there probably are some projects that have a higher number of existing units. And so, you know, the project wouldn't be financially viable under, under these changes.
Okay, and then, and that's where we would see possible financial implications also come in for those. I was giving nonprofits as one example, but I suppose all owners of sites that, you know, were constrained by that, by that zoning, if this were to pass, is that correct?
Yes, so yes, the, the number of existing units onsite is a big determinant of whether you're a redevelopment candidate or not. And, you know, so a lot of sites already without the O D P proposed change would already not be redevelopment candidates. However, proposing this change will make it more difficult to redevelop.
Okay, and just because I'm, I'm almost at three minutes, I'm going to move right now, I guess, for another round of questions, Mayor Stewart.
So perhaps councillor Dejune, you misunderstood. There are two rounds of questions, right? There, the first one.
Can you stop my clock while I ask you?
You would usually, yeah, yeah. You would usually ask the staff or applicant. Then we would go to speakers, to hear from speakers, to which you can also ask questions, and then go to a final round of questions. But what I was suggesting is that councillors just not go on the list for this round, this, this part of the section period. We hear the questions for, the statements from the public, and then councillors ask questions after that.
Oh, that, that's what I was suggesting, but you'd said councillor Swanson and I were on, that, that we should proceed. So now here we are, and there's a few councillors on the queue. So if there's another opportunity to ask questions, I'll hold the rest of my questions.
Okay, thanks, and then we can move on to councillors.
Sorry if I misunderstood that, that's what my intention to move this to after, so sorry.
I was probably not clear by explanation, sorry about that. Councillor Swanson, again, you can ask your question now, or you could hold off until after the, I think, thirty speakers that are lined up here. So up to you though, up to five minutes, please.
I move that we go directly to hear speakers and have councillors ask questions after we hear from them and can incorporate their concerns into our questions.
Second.
Second.
Okay, actually, if councillor Kirby Young and Dominado just took themselves off the list, then we'd be right there. That's what I was trying to get at. Councillor Dominado, you, you're still on the queue, do you have a question at this point?
Hi, Mayor, I'm unable to take myself off the queue now.
Oh, okay, I can take you off. There we go, so I don't see any councillors on the list. So I'm going to go directly to questions, sorry, to the, to the speakers list. And I have Eel Daniel as speaker number one. Yeah, sorry about that, councillor, it wasn't as clear as I should have been. Hi, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, yep, up to five minutes.
Okay, good, first of all, appreciate the, the chance to speak with the council and the mayor. My name is Eel Daniel, I'm a landlord, I'm representing a group of a few more landlords. We are owning a commercial rental properties. The zoning at this point is all stratified units that you can sell if you develop it, or a rental property with higher density. We have few concerns. The first concern is, the city proposal, the way it was written, the way it was delivered, said that basically, land value decreased. This statement actually ca, will cause discouraged landowners to sell their properties, and by doing so, the city will lose potential new supply of stratified condos or many more new rental apartments. I'll give you an example. If I have currently fifteen tenants, and I can basically develop forty stratified units or sixty rental units, if I will not sell my land, you're not going to increase the number of rental units, you're actually going to restrict them. That's one of the problems this proposal. Secondly, if you plan to allocate some rental units, we believe that the city should increase the allowable density in order to accommodate the potential loss of stratified condos. Developer will be discouraged to buy this commercial lot due to, due to unclear rental unit title owners. Who will own this unit? It's very unclear. And when I talked to some banks and asked them about, you know, potential development mortgage, or the bank said that they are not going to provide mortgages for development of mixed stratified rental units, where it's so unclear, you know, who is going to end up holding them, who is going to own them. In general, the proposal is very confusing, and I would like, I will ask everyone to really think it through. It caused a lot of anxiety, and in the long term, I believe that it will make people to really hesitate to develop or sell their lots for development, and that's the opposite that you want to achieve. That's all, these are my comments, and I hope that it will help with the decision to oppose this proposal.
Thanks very much, you do have a question. Councillor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks for calling in, I just want to clarify your comments. You indicated you, you're a property owner and representing property owners in C two zones, is that correct?
So we, we have a, yeah, we have a combined two laws of commercial zoning, which are rental, basically, they're this small, a different small rental area.
Okay, so it includes rental, how many units?
So we have altogether in, in a, in a law that is approved at this point for forty stratified condos or sixty rental units with fifteen tenants.
Sorry, can you clarify that you are planning to redevelop, is that your?
Well, one of the consideration, one of the consideration is yes, to develop the two laws that we have combined them, and potentially, we can have forty two-bedroom stratified condos or sixty rental units.
Okay.
I have fifteen tenants at this point.
Those are the options that you're considering.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, that's it for questions. Thank you very much for calling in, and I'm going to move to the next speaker. Uh, great, Nadia Ravello is speaker number two.
Hi, hello, could you hear me?
You sure can, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, my name is Nadia Ravello, pronounced Chi-Her-Hers. I would like to acknowledge that I live on a traditional ancestral and on the territory of the Kowalski people, if they were to, a new skin nation. I, I will do all I can to fight colonization and be alive of indigenous people. I am, I support the proposal, and I can say that I am one of the people you've been to speaking the heating on the real estate investment trust motion. I am a newcomer, I will complete a four years living in Vancouver and a community health worker. I live in an area classified as commercial C two. First of all, I want to ask the mayor Stewart, where does he think racialized working people should live? I am a racialized worker, and I can say that we are the ones with lowest wages doing frontline work, essential work, and reproducing the workforce with our children. I live in Kitzilano, in a neighborhood that I'm not supposed to live in. My monthly salary is two thousand four hundred dollars. I work thirty-five hours per week, but during the pandemic, I have worked much, much more, keep the system working. I live in a tiny studio, studio, sorry, that my partner and I rent for two, two thousand dollars. It means almost one hundred percent of my income and the fifty percent of my household income. I have had to quarantine work, and I have an entire life in that tiny home during the pandemic. And you, and you must ask yourself why I haven't moved to a bigger place. And I will say, because as a worker, I deserve to live in a place with great transportation, beautiful beaches, parks and, parks and facilities close to the workplace I work, and because I contribute with my work to the well-being of Vancouver. And also because with the same money, I am not going to get something bigger with good condition of air, illumination, transportation, and close to my workplace. And I want to say that the councillor who votes for motion or proposal that allows to destroy affordable housing and overall affordable rental units are a complete force displacement of working people, and they are hurting racialized working people deeply. So I can say that kind of way to vote brings forth racism and it's against workers. City councillor, do you want racialized working people to live where? In homes, in ghettos of poor racialized people? What is your contribution to equity? What is your respect for diversity? Racialized working people cannot live with symbolic gestures. We need to have our material conditions satisfied with dignity and equity. The city cannot allow us to destroy no one rental unit more. Therefore, I ask you to vote in favor of this proposal. If you vote in gains, you will contribute to encourage and forcibly displace racialized working people like me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for calling in this evening. Just checking here, I don't see any questions for you, so just want to thank you so much for participating. And I'm going to move to the next speaker, who is Beau Jarvis.
Hi, can you hear me?
I sure can, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Beau Jarvis, and I am president of West Group Properties and Chair of the Board of U D I. I'm here to adamantly oppose this policy initiative. Effectively by including C two in the city's rental O D P, it equates to a mass downzoning without compensation to property owners and will ultimately destabilize the very system not only our industry relies on, but also every single property owner in the city. I have to start by saying how disappointed I am where we, on where we have arrived on this. And I think it's important that we wind back the clock. I believe it was during a later two thousand nineteen council meeting that was a marathon of a meeting. At the end of the meeting, and notwithstanding staff's recommendation against it, a motion was slipped in, voted on, and passed that would seek to amend the City of Vancouver rental O D P to include C two. Subsequent to the motion being adopted and after the shock wore off, our industry and I personally met with some of you, where some of you acknowledged that you didn't entirely understand what it was you voted for, or at least what the consequences would be. And please let me be clear, I do not fault you for this after that extremely long and confusing council meeting with hundreds of pages of information to review and understand. Since that time, there have been two initiatives to try and walk this back, but there was not the political will to carry forward. Fast forward to today, and we have spent an untold amount of taxpayers' money on consultants, staff time, and a significant amount of bandwidth and industry members' time to essentially defend against the downzoning of people's C two properties. A downzoning that your own consultants and staff acknowledged could strip up to five hundred million dollars of people's equity from their properties, up to five million on some individual properties alone. And to be clear, many of these properties, if not most, are not owned by large organizations, but are owned by small and medium-sized companies and even individuals. What disappoints me the most in all of this is the time and money went into working towards trying to educate council as to why this is a really bad idea, and we could have spent that money and bandwidth on actually finding solutions that move the dial and deliver more affordable housing. Why do we keep doing this? Why do we keep focusing on punitive policy rather than collaborating on real solutions? I have stood before you on multiple occasions, and on behalf of our industry, I have formally acknowledged the crisis around stable, affordable housing. What's more, I have said we are at the table and waiting for the phone to ring so we can work with you to find solutions. And then I find myself devoting hours and hours towards defending against this utterly ridiculous policy. The irony here is, I understand you want to encourage investment in new affordable housing. You all say this publicly, in fact. All this downzoning will achieve is destabilizing the market and dissuading investors from investing in badly needed housing. You're scaring everyone, including the banks. I sat in on the meeting with city officials and four senior members of the banking industry, including a president from the Royal Bank of Canada, the largest of the Canadian banks, who said this move would destabilize the market and potentially force them to change the way in which they underwrite real estate in the City of Vancouver. The word, and I quote, foreclosure was used in that meeting. This meeting was recorded by your staff. Is anyone watching and listening to this? The banks are the very foundation of how we finance development and construction, including that of affordable and non-market housing, and they're telling you not to do this. What is truly unfortunate is the narrative on this initiative is entirely out of control. I have seen the call to action by the Vancouver Tenants Union with the heading, rental stock in C two is under threat, as if it's all being torn down tomorrow, which is entirely untrue. The data, which is yours, in your staff report, simply does not support this narrative. Moreover, there have actually been a net gain in secured purpose-built rental in the C two zones. The conversation can't be just all about tenants. I will remind you that tenants and landlords have a symbiotic relationship, meaning one cannot survive without the other. This policy will not only diminish a building owner's ability to reinvest in their buildings, it will completely erode many owners' ability to redevelop into new purpose-built rental. It will do this by both devaluing properties as well as sending a strong signal to investors, and most importantly, lenders, that the policy around land use and regulation in the City of Vancouver is entirely unstable, meaning what a bank is lending against today could change tomorrow at the whim of council. That is the signal you're sending. Please do not do this. I have said this before, but now I am begging you to push the pause button. Let's get tenants, landlords, and policymakers in a room to find common ground and collaborate and have a balanced conversation about trying to find solutions that are not punitive to any one party. Thank you.
Thanks so much, you do have questions? Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, Mr. Jarvis, for being here. I just want to reflect back a few things that I heard, and if you can affirm for me. You're saying that broadly, the message to industry, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there a growing sentiment of don't do your rental or don't build in Vancouver? Look to do in other municipalities because it's too volatile here?
I would say the answer is absolutely yes.
Okay.
And, and it's not only, it's not only our, our industry, it's the lenders, the Schedule One banks of Canada that are telling you this.
Okay, yeah, I, I can hear the angst and the passion in your voice on that. Um, the second question there, and I just want to expand a little bit. Am I hearing correctly, I'm praising this back, so I think it's really important to be clear. You're also suggesting this will actually inhibit the development of new purpose-built rental and potentially those owners not having the financial wherewithal to invest in maintenance of existing buildings, therefore, existing older buildings would decay? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, you're hearing that. Let, let's, let's look at this here. We have an aging rental stock that stopped being built in the late seventies and early eighties. We have rent, we basically have the ability to increase rent taken away from landlords, in particular during COVID, where we're now going to have two years of basic rent freeze. We have property taxes going up by twenty-five percent. We have insurance going up by forty percent. We have insurance going up by 40%, maintenance costs going through the roof. It's a business that's untenable to be in, and now this is a move to downzone property and erode people's equity. It's the only way, people are borrowing from their properties to replace roofs, boilers, upgrade windows. That's how it works. You can't get the rent to do it anymore, right? So absolutely, these buildings will deteriorate. It's already happening in, in the rental ODP area.
I have one other question, and that was really around, are you willing to come to the table and discuss workable and other solutions if council made a determination not to proceed with this direction?
Councillor Kirby Young, I have said this time and time again, I'm waiting for the phone to ring. There are some members of council I have called on this very initiative, and I have not received a call back. So, and I apologize for my passion. I am so fed up. We are not doing anything as a, as a, as a community coming together to move the dial and delivering more housing. And it's, and it's so exhausting.
Okay. I can't quite see my time there. I'm getting close.
You got about two minutes.
Oh, oh, that's right, it's five minutes. Sorry.
It is five, yes, five.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jarvis, I was, it's been a long day remembering what type of session we're in. If I cut you off on that one, do you want to expand a little bit in terms of having a dialogue about other solutions? And if you, I'm trying to get a sense here from you, on the record, if UDI is willing to be a willing partner and recognize the goals that the city has here while about trying to increase the amount of rental, but being sensitive to existing tenants?
I can say on behalf of our industry and behalf of UDI that we fully acknowledge the crisis, and we've said this before publicly, I've said it in front of all of you, and we are absolutely at the table. I suggest a task force be brought together that includes tenants and tenant representative groups, landlords, building owners, operators, and policymakers, including elected officials. And we kept, we roll up our sleeves and start talking about this, and we start sharing perspectives. Because we, this policy is being constantly developed in silos. It's either in favor of tenants, or there's a discussion of building owners or landlords or incentives, and it, and it's just, we have to do this together. The conversation needs to be balanced so we can have balanced outcomes. And we are absolutely at the table.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Councillor Dominado, up to five minutes for questions.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Jarvis, for calling in this evening. I just wanted to follow up on your comments, and specifically, the Coriolis report that was appended to this public hearing document. Coriolis reflected that in there, the implications of this expansion is that it could have implications for the supply of new housing over time. And in the context of every day, we're talking about housing in the city and housing affordability. Could you comment on that and what you see in terms of housing supply and the implications of adopting this?
Yeah, I, I think it comes down to two things. Number one, again, you're, by, by making moves to mass downzone, which devalues people's property, you're sending a signal to investors that there's lack of stability in the marketplace, and you're also sending signals to lenders, including institutional lenders like Royal Bank of Canada, TD Bank, Bank of Montreal, that it's, it's unstable. And when you do that, capital has a very low tolerance for, you know, uncertainty, and capital will move elsewhere. And what we need to build new housing of all, housing on all parts of the spectrum is we need capital and investment. And if we don't create an environment that's stable and certain, that capital will go elsewhere. And, and it's already going elsewhere. And secondly, when we erode equity in people's property, we diminish their ability to use that equity to build new housing. And again, I'm talking, it's the same for the nonprofit sector. It's the same for condos, it's the same for purpose-built rental. So those are the two primary reasons that the supply of rental would diminish if policies like this are initiated.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You've addressed my question. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Dajnov, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Jarvis. I'm, I'm going to ask you a similar question to what I asked of our, to what I asked our staff. I gave one example, for instance, of nonprofits that was looking to redevelop, but for anyone who's looking to redevelop a C2 site, if the current amount of housing, I mean, the median is five units, but let's say it's more than that, and then currently the zoning now says that, you know, you have, is definitely not as hot, you know, but let's say you're in a situation where it conflicts with a different policy. And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to be careful because I know we are in a public hearing here. Would, would that bring concern to you that a pro forma couldn't work from that standpoint? Because you just simply probably couldn't deliver the housing because you'd have to go through a rezoning with conflicting policies? And then also, would that bring its own financial implications on top of the ones that you've already answered? You know, I'm, I'm not going to make you go over again talking about how we should be listening to the banks. I've already asked our staff about those financial implications and heard your, your answers to my colleagues, but I'll, I'll leave you the rest of the time to kind of explain maybe to me, if, if you would, how you think that this could hurt, you know, the current owners of C2 sites?
I think I, I can, I think I can understand your second question a little bit better than the first part of the question regarding nonprofits and the number of minutes.
The first part of the question was more about replacement, and I, and I apologize, I'm, I'm in a place where I'm actually echoing on my own phone here. So it, it's hard, it's hard when that, that technical aspect comes into it. But what I was asking is, this, this policy would require rental replacement, and if you're in a situ, and it doesn't allow for a situation where, per se, when a C2 site that, that has been downzoned since the time, you know, that it was built, if you were to look at a pro forma and try and redevelop that, how do you redevelop something you can't replace under current zoning? That was the first question. And then the second question was about financial implications on a pro forma, aside from financing, even if there was financing options, would it, would it just be too risky? Would this be something that C2 site owners just wouldn't do? And in fact, this would, you know, be detrimental to our housing.
Just two minutes.
Yeah, okay, so I still, the first part I'm still confused about, I'm going to try and answer the second part, and maybe we can weave into answering the first part. So if, if there was this policy in place and you had more than five, 10 units on your property, you probably wouldn't, many people wouldn't be able to redevelop because the financial analysis wouldn't work. And that's what Coriolis determined as well, because you're, you're now having to replace the units where you otherwise wouldn't if you were building a strata development, and if you're, and, and that's taking up a component of the FSR. That's the other problem here, is council didn't ask staff to also look at compensation measures, right? If we're going to have to replace 10 rental units, one for one, here's extra density to compensate that and make it all work. But that's the issue. And then the banks, they look at the worst-case scenario. So they look at the fact that the policy will allow 100% of the people to come back at the discounted rates and stay there forever. That's what the policy allows. So they underwrite it in the worst-case scenario, which does not avail you the amount of financing or capital that would be required to embark on the development. So I don't know, I, I apologize if I'm a little bit confused as to the question you're answering.
And I'm sorry for the situation that I'm in right now, where I couldn't ask those questions properly, but thank you, Mr. Jarvis. You've answered many of my questions, even that I had before that, in the answers that you gave to my colleagues. And I do appreciate you being here. All of council wanted to hear about this, including myself, but I did try and bring a motion of reconsideration, just to the comments that you mentioned before, only because, you know, my, my vote in that whole long day of housing, housing strategy policy wasn't, you know, exactly, I, I was hoping it wouldn't bring us here. Thank you. That's all.
Councillor Frye, questions?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Jarvis, for joining us, and thank you for your ongoing willingness to chat with folks like me sometimes. Difficult conversations, but always good conversations. And thanks for joining us tonight. You, you mentioned a few things, I was just jotting down some of the, like, some of the words you used, like untenable and unstable and diminished equity. And I, I totally appreciate where you're, you're coming from on that, but also those same words could apply to folks who are renting in our city, folks who are renting in C2s, and some of the anxiety that, that people who rent are feeling around affordability. And, and I guess, so my question is, because, you know, you, you smart folks over at the Urban Development Institute, and you've had some time to think about this, and, and I appreciate that we may not have directed staff to come up with measures of, of compensation and some kind of compromise that could see us protect some of that important affordable rental stock, recognizing that a lot of the new build is not that same level of affordability. So do you have suggestions where you think this could go, where we could, you know, respond to those very real concerns from folks who, you know, work and live in our city who are renting, and, and meet some of your concerns around, valid concerns around your land valuations?
Yeah, thanks, Councillor Frye. And I, first let me say, I always very much enjoy our conversations. You know, I think that, first let me state that, again, our industry acknowledges that there has been displacement, people are being removed from their communities, doctors, schools, this is happening. We, we, we understand this. What's been going on to get to where we are tonight, you know, downzoning people's property, eroding equity, diminishing people's ability to reinvest in buildings? By the way, I've heard renters say that they want buildings maintained properly too, right? The expectation is that the landscaping's kept nice, the building's cleaned, maintenance is, is consistent. And so we have to, when I use the word untenable, the environment in which we're operating, it is untenable to the extent that it's very, very challenging for us to now reinvest in those buildings. And so what I am proposing is that rather than move forward with this very punitive bylaw or change to the, the ODP in the City of Vancouver, let's get together. And this is what I proposed two years ago, that's why I'm so disappointed, is the taxpayers' money that went into Coriolis, the, the bandwidth of staff, the bandwidth of all the industry members, including tenant advocacy groups that spent time on this initiative as well. Instead of this, why aren't we in a room together? Why haven't we been in a room together for the last two years? Again, sharing perspectives, finding common ground, and finding solutions that can work for both tenants and building owners. There's a way to do this. We just have to try. And I've been advocating for this passionately for, you know, years now, and that's why I, I, there's a sense of frustration in my voice and passion, because I, I am frustrated at how we got here. So I, I hope that answers your question, Councillor Frye.
Well, I mean, I appreciate the frustration, and I appreciate that there's obviously been a failure to sort of like consolidate and work on a collective solution. But I, I did sort of pose the question, do, do you have any solutions off the top of your head that, you know, like, you mentioned compensation, and I'm assuming that's around sort of increased density, that kind of piece?
Yeah, I do think that that's one of the solutions. I mean, obviously, you know, the city's only currency is really density or the ability to perhaps waive certain charges to do with rezoning or DCLs or things like that. I think there's other unique solutions. You know, we've come to four staff and some members of council that have a conversation. There's a lot of C2 sites out there that are vacant. So maybe there's an ability to transfer density to some vacant sites, and you, you know, I think I spoke to you about this, because we have a bunch of vacant C2 sites where we could transfer density from existing apartment building sites to some of the vacant sites, and then you upgrade the buildings for the, to prolong the life of those older buildings, and then the compensation is happening on another vacant site. Now, that's a unique circumstance, and you have to find a proponent that has both a vacant C2 site and a C2 site that has a rental building on it, where you're going to apply the rate of change. But I think that, you know, if I was to, you know, I don't, I don't think there's a silver bullet here, but I think density and compensation in, it's just like the heritage situation, right? When there's an expectation that someone should, you know, approve or improve heritage, there's a compensation and there's the heritage density bank. There's things like that.
Appreciate it. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Jarvis.
Right to five minutes. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes, please go ahead, questions?
Yeah. Thanks for coming in. So the staff are saying that over 70% of renters support this policy, and that the rents in these buildings are about 40% lower than average. So what would you say to someone who's being evicted from one of these apartments, which rents at 40% lower than average, and ends up having to pay 60% of their income on rent in another building like the previous speaker, Nadia, does?
Yeah, you asked me this question before, Councillor Swanson, and I'm going to turn the, the question, I'm going to answer your question with a question. What are you going to say to that renter when the building falls down because it's 100 years old? Like, we can't just make these buildings last forever.
I can answer that question. I live in a, I live in an old building, and because it's old, the mortgage is paid off, and we have lots of money for repairs. We're getting lots of repairs. I just got a new fridge. People are getting new fences, new roofs. Our trees are being trimmed.
I'm just going to step in here.
If the building is old and paid off, there's lots of money to do repairs.
I wish our buildings, I wished our buildings were all paid off.
Hold on, hold it, hold it.
That's a, that's a wonderful position to be in, and I guess now that you can't raise rent, they're going to have to probably go get a second mortgage or a new mortgage in order to reinvest in those, in, in certain things, right? Like, because.
Okay, Councillor Swanson, this is questions. We did have a little reversal of roles there, but, and I know this is.
You did ask me a question. I wanted to answer it.
But, but it's your, you're the, you're the councillor, so you, you're here to answer questions, to ask questions.
That's it.
Okay. Thanks so much. That's it for, for questions from council. Thanks so much for coming in, and I'm going to move to the next, the next speaker. Council, we have speaker number four of 30 is William Weir. William Weir?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and I am understanding that William Weir is not on the line.
Okay, thanks so much. Speaker number five, Kareem Ibrahim.
Hello. Good evening, councillor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Excellent. Thank you. So, council, thank you for hearing from me today. My name is Kareem Ibrahim. I'm speaking to you as an individual today, not representing any organization. I'm asking you one big question. What will your legacy be when your term ends as councillor? I think we, we all know exactly what's happening today. It's not very complex. We deal with a lot of complex issues. We talked a lot about policing in the summer of 2020, and the solutions are not clear. Yet city staff have come to you today with a very clear proposal to address an issue that is endemic to our city. Vancouver is famous for a few things, and I think primarily two. One, it is hilariously unaffordable, and people are having to move out of the city whenever they have to, whenever they're getting evicted or for whatever reason. And secondly, the social inequality of the city is absolutely like disarming. It's appalling. I live in Strathcona. You all know about Strathcona very well. And I see the consequences of decades of city councils that have unfortunately weighed far too much in the interest of developers and landlords, and have allowed this kind of rhetoric, this kind of capital will leave our city kind of rhetoric, to unfortunately take hold, and now we're in a situation where the consequences are at your doorstep. We have hundreds of people homeless in my neighborhood who are unable to find places to rent, who, there are people who are unemployed, who are spending more than 50% of their income on housing, and this is simply unacceptable. Now, I want to ask you this. We've heard from many people today. We've heard from the president of a housing corporation, West Group Properties, which the revenue of which is 203 million, explaining how banks are not going to be lending further and with this sort of fear-mongering rhetoric. Again, this is a very straightforward analysis. We have people who cannot afford to rent, who cannot afford to move out of their home, and if they do and they get run evicted or demevicted, they have to leave the city. And then we have the interest, the understandable interest of property developers and real estate owners and things, who do not want to see their capital diminished in the slightest. So unfortunately, this is a trade off, but again councillor, we don't want our city to be famous for the things it's famous for already. I'm an advocate with the Vancouver Tenants Union and I represent groups of tenants that are facing eviction on the grounds of renovation. And let me tell you, regardless of how many protections we put in place, many, many of these landlords are very predatory. We, of course, under the guise of renovation, we hear old buildings, old buildings, there are infinite ways to renovate a building and bring it back up into condition, number one, without actually displacing all of the tenants. There are ways to keep them in place, but secondly, you know, if we want to give the landlords an easier time, we can temporarily relocate them and have them come back in without having to evict the whole building and then skyrocket the rent by 150%. We have many of the same companies that I've witnessed, renovating tenants, crushing them into taking buyout offers and then a year later, those same properties are being valued in terms of rent at 120, 130, 150% of the rate they were previously. So again, the plan is clear here, this rental relocation like strategy clearly works, we cannot afford to lose any more rental properties in the city. You will continue to hear about the fears on capital leaving the city despite that Vancouver is not only one of the most expensive places to live in Canada, but also one of the wealthiest and for good reason. This has been a pattern and we can't see this happening any further. And if we do, unfortunately, I don't think that I need to forewarn you as to what the consequences will be. We will have more people living on the street, we will have more people having to leave the city entirely and completely disconnect from their network on account of being run evicted. This is the reality for many of the tenants who I represent, who when facing an eviction, second round, third round, fourth round from landlords who are persistent, because again, we live in a capitalist economy, there, there is no incentive for a landlord to not continue to lodge the same arguments again and again and again. There's sincerely no limit. And so many of the tenants, defenseless and exhausted, end up taking these buyout offers and like we heard from Nadia earlier, living in $2,000 studio apartments, spending more than half of their income on rent if they are lucky enough to even get a place to live. And so please, today, when we vote on this motion, you've been informed by staff of the benefits, I, I want to know what your legacy will be and if you want to see the continued trend of Vancouver being completely unaffordable and home to Canada's largest homeless population. Thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in, you don't have councillor Swanson, please go ahead, up to five minutes. You're on mute councillor Swanson?
Thanks so much for coming in. Did you hear the previous speaker?
Yes, I was listening to the previous speaker discuss real estate matters and all that and yeah.
Yeah, so if you were, had a chance to respond to him, what would you say?
Well, I would say this, right? I understand what it means to have financial interests in one's business. I understand that measures that are being articulated as punitive are actually better translated as diminishing one's potential to grow revenue. I would ask them why it is that as the president of a $203 million revenue earning real estate corporation, why that interest should take priority over the needs of individuals without housing or individuals who cannot afford to pay for medical bills, to put their kids through school or to access other basic needs on account of their income going exclusively or mostly to rent? That would be my question.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you. We don't have any other questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have Christian Pollack, speaker number six.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Yeah, my name's Christian, I just want to acknowledge that I'm on the stolen and occupied lands of the Muskrin, Squamish and Salawitut peoples and I'm a tenant in Hastings Sunrise. I'm kind of strongly support the proposal to require rental replacements in the C2 zones. And I mostly want to address some of the opposition to this and a lot of people talking about it hurting developers and property owners and diminishing property values and that the banks and lenders will run for the hills and all that. And the argument that by extension that this will hurt tenants. And I think a lot of opponents to this, elected and otherwise, have this basic assumption that that will lead to this hurting tenants. But I mean, so first of all, in the midst of a crisis, as the previous speaker said, does it matter more that renters and their homes have slightly more protections or that property owners can continue to profit off of our need for housing? Like who's, whose priority is more important here? Secondly, and I think more importantly, this argument that hurting landlords or investors equates hurting tenants comes up again and again and again when we talk about tenant protections and rights. And it's this incredibly twisted logic that really only serves to solidify their own power over tenants and our security and therefore their profits. This logic where, you know, the, the state or the city in this case has to not only free them from any regulation like the C2 protection, but also subsidize them with taxpayer money often all the way through. If you don't do this, there'll be no repairs, there'll be no housing and tenants will starve. And there's this hidden assumption within this argument, I think, that there's just no alternative to them. They claim that to survive and be housed, we need developers and landlords, but we really don't, we don't need them. In fact, we'd all be much better off if banks and the Jon Snowvilles of the world, a few rich people weren't controlling all of our housing and deciding if we get to be secure or not. And I think the real, the reality is like the very obvious solutions to our housing crisis, which this logic hides, is to decommodifying housing and shifting the power away from these private interests and towards a more collective ownership model. And so I think beginning with this, with this proposal, we have to reject this clearly self-serving logic of constantly catering to the lords of our society and instead begin to offer an alternative model of housing, which takes away the stranglehold that these people have over our housing and our lives. I also think it's important specifically with this proposal to remember like how basic these protections are. This doesn't even, from what I understand, this doesn't say anything about affordability of this like replacement rentals, let alone rent controls. This is literally just replacing one rental with another with no conditions as far as I understand. This is the absolute bare minimum and I can't believe that even has to be argued that every renter's home in Vancouver should have the same basic security. I myself spend about 38% of my income on rent, that is very unacceptable. I know and the city knows that there are many more people like me or people who are even worse off, I'm all over Vancouver, including many people in these C2 zones. And we absolutely cannot pick and choose who amongst these people get to have their homes protected and who do not. Because for many of us losing these rental homes, these units and by extension our homes and our houses would not only mean losing our home, but our community, our friends and ultimately our basic security needed to survive. So that's all I have to say on this, thank you.
Thanks so much, I don't see any questions for you. And so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have David Sander, David Sander, speaker number seven of 30.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Great, thank you. My name is David Sander, as you noted, I am director at Hollyburn Properties and I'd like to just note that Hollyburn does not own any rental housing on it, so we are not affected by this motion at all. However, I, you know, took my time to come here tonight and speak to you because I oppose this motion because it is a terrible idea. The, there's a lot of myths that I'm hearing tonight, that this motion will protect tenants. This motion does not protect tenants. This motion does not prevent a building from being torn down or, or somebody from being run evicted. This has absolutely nothing to do with run eviction at all. And there's policies in place that do protect tenants. One of the, the, is, I can't, is that it's the people in these buildings that matter. It's the people who, who are struggling in the city that we need to protect. It's not the buildings. Protecting the buildings is a flawed approach, protecting the tenants is, is the way to go forward. And I'll note that this council, this very council, you guys, you know, in this room or at your desks at home, introduced your own tenant protection policy in 2019. So I, I'm befuddled as to why we're even here frankly. It's a policy that doesn't make sense. C2 was an area that was relatively straightforward where we saw, I think it's 600 positive rental units built, you know, unless we don't want to build rental units, which last time I checked it, we still did. This policy is not needed, it's, it's a down zoning. What you, what you are doing is stripping property owners of value, of their life savings, of money that they were planning on using to perhaps build rental housing or buy a new roof or upgrade an elevator. You're, I can't, enough, you're not protecting tenants. The tenants that come here and are telling you that, they don't understand the matters in my opinion. And I say that with the deepest respect because I think tenants do need protecting in the city. I think that it's important that we find the right balance and that everybody has a secure housing. The, you know, I can't help but, but remember that a few short weeks ago, this city council was debating land, land, large landlords and REITs and what we could do about REITs buying buildings in Vancouver and the concern over the large landlords and, you know, it seemed to me that the city, you know, the, the city's sort of, the belle of the ball was the, the little Greek lady who owned a couple of units in a building. Well, it's the little Greek lady that's going to get hurt here, it's not the large landlords, it's not the REITs that hurt. This is, this policy will adversely affect the, the small landlords, the people who manage rental off the side of their desk the most. So, you know, when you strip these people of 50% of their value or up to 50% of their value and you're not incentivizing these people, you know, I have to ask you, what, what does that mean? What comes next? What does it mean for the political stability of this municipality? And what does it say to the home builders who are contemplating building rental in this city? What do you say to the rental housing provider who just lost their life savings? I'm not sure what I would tell them, but I hope it's something that you guys have thought about. And I'm going to end by saying what I've already said, you know, protect the people, don't freeze the building. Thank you.
Thanks so much, you have a question from councillor Dejanova?
Thanks very much for spending your time speaking to council tonight and I hear the passion in your voice. You made, you made a number of points, the one that I'd like to touch on is specifically right before you, we heard from a speaker who had talked about how the city needs to, you know, focus more on rental. Do you think that this is going to in any way in C2 see our rental numbers rise?
No, C2 has.
Is this going to help improve rental at all?
This isn't going to help build rental. I mean, the, the, the root cause of the housing crisis is that we don't have enough housing for people who want to live here. And that's because we haven't been building rental housing or workforce housing in this city really very much at all. We started, the last 10 years, we started to build a little bit, we're not moving the needle enough, we need to be building thousands of them every year. And if we're going to strip C2 property owners of their rights, going to create that political instability, then, then all you're doing is, is taking away the good work that, that staff have started to do to start moving the needle and, and you're destabilizing the market and, and you're using, you're doing it through a means that is actually a productive source of rental housing in the last 10 years. So no, the answer is no, you're not going to get more housing, it's going to make things worse.
Thanks, thanks very much. I, I also just, just wanted to ask you, and I know that you come to the city often talking about rental and that you have experience in contributing to the rental market as well and, and you've been here on a number of topics, including projects over my two terms. So my, my question for you is, if we're looking to the development community to build this, would you think that the only way to make this viable to change zoning for C2 would be to, just like we do with MERP and some of our other programs, look at waivers or look at, you know, bonus density, I'm not saying both of those come with MERP, I'm just saying, you know, when we look at those programs, those pilots or the incentive programs to deliver rental, would, would you say that that's what would have to happen in C2 for, for there to be more rental housing that actually came of this, if that's what the goal is here?
Yeah, it's, it's a little ironic that we're here tonight because this was, this was the byproduct of another council meeting where we were talking about incentivizing rental in C2. The, the, and yet this is coming forward for that, that motion. The, yes, I need to incentivize, and, and one speaker before me spoke about perhaps you can do NC bonus within C2. Well, City of North Vancouver has a rental density bonus policy and as you've got, City of North Vancouver punches above its weight as it relates to delivering rental housing. And it, it has this policy whereby if you upgrade an older building without displacing tenants and you demonstrate that it won't be a development site for a number of years, then the city will give you rental density to go build somewhere else. I mean, that's killing birds with one stone. You save, upgrade a rental building and then you get density to go build somewhere else. And that's a policy that makes sense to me. The other policies as it relates to C2 where you're going to six store, hopefully going to six stories as a right in a simplified building format as well for, for rental housing. And, and that's what we need to do more of and frankly less of what's happening tonight.
Okay, so to meet the, you know, number of units we have before us in, in sort of the timeframe that we have, like what is it left, 20 months, 20 visa payments or something as I call it, in this term, do you think that this is going to help us to achieve our, our goal overall of, you know?
No.
Thousands of units of rental? Thank you very much and I'm so sorry that you've had to spend your evening here tonight. Waiting on the phone.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, that's it for questions and I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Council, just so you know, we are on question speaker number eight of 30. If we don't finish this item this evening, which is looking not great at 10, 10 minutes after nine, we'll be reconvening on April 1st. And speaker number eight is, I just have a single name, L.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here and I'm told that L is not on the line.
Okay, let's try speaker number nine, Theo Lloyd Coles.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hi councillor and mayor, my name is Theo, I am a resident of Vancouver and have been for about 13 years. I've been directly affected by this issue. I was demevicted from a building in a C2 zone and after I, I left, I found it very difficult to find a new place to live at an affordable rate. I don't know if any of you here are renters, I know a few of you are, but it's a really difficult situation out, out there right now. I make a living wage, a so-called living wage, but in Vancouver, a living wage is not really a living wage when I'm spending so much of my income on my rent. I think recently I was able to move in with my partner and had I not been able to do that, I definitely would have been moving out of the city. My, my roommate who I lived with when I was demevicted, he, he found a place and his rent's more than doubled. He's a teacher, he's a, like a primary school teacher and he's finding it very difficult. We're working people, we, we pay taxes, we make decent wages, but we find it very hard to live in this city. As I said, I've lived here 13 years and I, I can count the number on my, on one hand, how many purpose-built rental buildings I've seen put up in this city. And, and, and when they say they're affordable rent, it's like $2,500 for a one bedroom. I mean, that is not the definition of affordable. An interesting thing, like way to look at it is if we don't prevent these, these units from being destroyed in C2 zoning, that's going to be a net loss of a rental unit and that exacerbates the problem because we already don't have enough rental units. So the more we lose, the more expensive it gets for all of us and we're in a housing crisis. We have homeless all over the street and people that supposedly make a living wage can't afford to live in the city. I've heard comments from the developers who oppose this motion and I, I've read some of them too, that they cite the 4% of. read some of them too, that they cite the four percent of rental stock, um, that is going to be lost. Um, and they're saying that this is an insignificance. So I did a little math, I think it's about three thousand units, uh, rental units that are gonna be lost. Um, and, and that's not individual people, that could be five thousand people over the course of time that are losing their, their, their home. Um, and we, we heard at the beginning that, that, um, these rental units, um, are about forty percent lower than the average cost of apartments here. Um, people living in these are elderly, they're low-income, they're maybe on disability. Where are they gonna go if we lose these units? It's, I mean, it's pretty ridiculous to, to consider we have, um, wealthy developers on the call talking about capital flight, capital this. Why, like, I understand we have to talk members here, but why aren't we, why aren't we really talking about who is bearing the brunt of this? And it is tenants. We don't have to worry about the Greek old lady who, uh, owns an apartment building 'cause if it's a Greek old lady, she probably bought it in nineteen-eighties. She probably bought the apartment building for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or half a million dollars thirty-five years ago, and it's probably worth six million now. I'm not worried, I'm frankly not worried about those people losing a little bit of, of their equity or whatever it is. I mean, come on. We're talking about working-class people, we're talking about the elderly who live in Vancouver, this is where their families are, their communities, and we're, we're talking about them just like insignificant numbers. So, let's pass this motion. Um, if we wanna talk about amendments after, and we can, we can bring West Group to the table and, and talk about those things, we can do that, but we can pass the motion first, protect the most vulnerable people. I know Vancouver doesn't have a good reputation for that, but let's do it. Let's start here, pass the motion, and then we can talk about how developers can make money later. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, you don't have any questions, so I'm gonna move to the next speaker. Uh, speaker number ten, Fraser McGee.
Hi, can you folks hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Great, thanks for, thanks for listening to us today. Uh, I'd like to start by acknowledging that, uh, I'm currently calling from the unceded ancestral territory of the Musqueam, Coast Salish and Tsuketum First Nations. I live on Six, near Sixing Commercial, so I am in an RHS ODP and benefit from that program currently. If I was living just half a block east from where I am, I would need the C2 extension to be protected in order for myself to be protected. If we do not have a modest one-to-one rental replacement protection, then fewer rental units will be created, rental prices will increase, which means that people like me who are relatively privileged will be able to shoulder that cost into our overall budget and get that unit. And someone else who has a lower income than me or who has more, less ability to pay for that will be pitched into a worse housing situation such as an SRO. Then this will lead to greater competition between SROs with the most vulnerable members of our community being pushed out onto the streets because we have failed to protect, um, the rent, the ability for renters to rent homes and instead prioritize anxieties of our wealthier community members about their property values. To the concern that this may discourage development of rental, this is not an ambitious proposal. We are literally talking about a one-to-one replacement of existing rental stock, just that we, we just don't want the housing affordability problem to get any worse. I am personally not against change. I think that a healthy neighborhood should change and grow into something different. But if the difference we're talking about is unchecked development of market-priced stratas with no protections in place to stop an overall reduction in affordable renting stock, well, that's incredibly harmful to low and middle-income renters across the city. Additionally, this is impacting the very diversity of our city that makes Vancouver such a wonderful place to live, and I don't wanna stand here and, and see folks not protect that. To the concern about the loss of property values, um, as, as a speaker, a few speakers before me has asked, I think that we need to ask ourselves, and I, and I demand that you folks ask yourselves this as our representative, who needs our help the most in this city? Is it renters who currently have no access to the wealth creation tool of property ownership, who are already under significant strain from our housing affordability crisis, and many whom pay well over thirty percent of their net income? In some, we've heard speakers today that have paid over sixty percent of their income to keep a roof over their head? Or do we care about the property value of existing homeowners in an area of the world where owning property is already guaranteed to be a massive lucrative asset? Given the nature of our physical geography and the high quality of living in Vancouver that we can expect to continue, I very much doubt that home ownership is going to become appealing due to any marginal losses in property value that might occur from these protections. And if I'm being honest, I have a hard time feeling sympathy for property owners losing value on units that already have some of the highest value of any property asset on this earth, especially when you compare that to folks having homes over their heads. I honestly think it's, um, I, I think that people should really consider what they're actually insinuating here when they're making those comments. So, do we want to further entrench wealth and widen the wealth gap in our community, leading it to be less diverse and less open for everyone? Or do we want to offer a modest but significant, significant amount of protection to those who really need it? Housing is a human right, and we shouldn't allow anxieties about property values override the ability for people to have a home. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any, uh, questions, uh, from councillor for you, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. But thanks for participating. Uh, we have, uh, Olena Hardy.
Yeah, you got it.
Hi, uh, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Uh, hi, mayor and councillors, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, my name's Olena Hardy, and I am calling in support of this recommendation. So I'm a resident of Vancouver and a renter, and I believe that this motion is a small step in the right direction to protect renters in Vancouver. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about my own experience renting in Vancouver. I grew up here, I've been renting for eight years, and because I don't expect to ever be able to afford to buy, I'll likely be a renter for decades into the future. So, as I'm sure most renters here can relate to, renting in Vancouver is inhibitively expensive, units are in short supply, and it can lack a real sense of stability, uh, and security due to demovictions, changes in ownership, redevelopment, among other things. And affordability has always been a big issue for me. Uh, because of it, I've, uh, I've lived in precarious housing situations. Um, for example, in twenty-fifteen, I lived in an illegal basement suite that had one small barred window and no fire detectors. Um, it was a, honestly, a scary place to live, but it was the only place I could afford. Um, living in that suite was when I first really realized, uh, the crisis that renters face here. So fast forward to now, I'm lucky to have a much better housing situation in an apartment on the Canby Corridor. Uh, because the apartment is an older building with some quirks and issues, it's below-market rent. Uh, however, forty-eight percent of my income still goes towards my rent each month, which obviously points to the larger issue of housing affordability in our city. Um, and we heard from some developers today alarmed that they could lose fifty percent of their property value. Um, and I just wanna mention this, um, I work full-time in a salary position, and I still lose fifty percent of my income every single month just paying my rent. So that's just some food for thought. So I don't currently live in a C2 zone, but the reason I wanted to share a bit about my rental history was to paint a picture of what renting in Vancouver can look like and why action is urgently needed to protect and aid renters. So if you choose to preserve rentals in C2 zones, then in the long term, renters won't risk losing these three thousand units in C2 areas, which is particularly critical in a city with, with such low vacancy rates. And this, in my view, is at its core a net good. Additionally, uh, one-for-one rental replacement requirements have a dampening effect on the rate of development, which I actually believe is, is crucial and important in this instance, um, since for the large part, the cheapest rental options in our city right now are these older units. So even though my housing is not particularly affordable, it's below-market rent, and living in a non-C2 zone gives me a bit more of security and stability because of the decreased chance that my building will be redeveloped and that I'll be forced to seek out even more unaffordable accommodation. And I, I just truly believe that every person should be afforded the security and stability in their housing. And, and I also really urge you to consider the class differences that are so deeply connected to this matter. Personally, I value the right to housing for the many more than I value the pro- uh, value the profit, the pursuit of profit for the few. Um, so, in conclusion, uh, extending the rental housing stock is the bare minimum of support that we can provide renters. Preserving the total number of rental units in Vancouver is a small step in addressing the housing crisis, and I urge you to support this motion. And importantly, I ask that you continue your work beyond this motion to protect renters in this city. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I don't see any questions, so we'll move to the next speaker. We have Leah Sanchez-Mild, speaker number twelve.
Hi, good evening to the mayor and councillor, to staff, and to others listening. Uh, my name is Leah Sanchez-Mild, and I'm a resident in Vancouver. Specifically, I'm a renter in the Kensington Cedar Cottage neighborhood, which is actually one of the areas with the most, uh, rental housing stock in C2 zones. Um, and yeah, I'm speaking in support of the recommendations of this report. Um, I definitely have personal reasons to speak in favor, favor of this recommendation. So I'm a European immigrant and a such, I've never had dreams of homeownership, but rather dreams of safe and permanent renting, which I've seen as possible, um, in other places. Um, and I arrived in Vancouver nine years ago, and since then I've been working on building a community for myself and contributing to webs of mutual support in the city. And I've had it much easier than others, and I still often feel that the city is pushing me out, usually around the time that I have to move or find another housing. And despite that, I think I have found people that I, that I've made a community with, and all these people are renters. My friends are artists, art administrators, scientists, social workers, people who work at small local businesses and at NGOs, and we all exist in an income bracket for which barely any new rental market is being built. We live in collective houses, in SROs, in illegal suites, or we've moved to another city like Burnaby. And if things continue the way they are, it is likely that we will have to leave Vancouver altogether. Um, and that is speaking from a personal note. Uh, background aside, I believe that housing is an essential right, and I know that the renters in districts with C2 zoning are often the most vulnerable and likely to lose housing and be displaced from their communities when their buildings get developed. Um, they're some of the most affordable units, and nothing equivalent is being built to replace them. So, um, surprisingly, I heartily agree with, with some of the, of the developers that we've heard from today in that, um, yeah, this, this measure that we're, that I'm supporting today, it's not the, the one that's going to solve it all, but it is going to be the beginning. It is going to pave the way for the city to negotiate with developers to make sure that affordable units are being replaced with affordable units. Um, because right now, we can't negotiate with developers if they can instead go ahead and say, "Well, then no rental units will be built, I'll build, uh, condos instead in this C2 zoning," or something else. So we need this first step in a long road, um, or, or one of the first steps in a long road to start protecting, um, these very vulnerable and also very valuable members of our community. Um, and yeah, given my background, I look to other cities in Europe often, um, and there are cities fighting very similar issues, and there are cities that are realizing that they cannot operate without the people that live there as renters. Um, and they're realizing that they either need to protect and grow their affordable housing, or they will change for the worse, and people will move to other cities. Um, so yeah, I think, both from pers- from personal reasons as well as, as a matter of principle, um, I want you to pass this motion. And if downstream we encounter these potential problems that we're not, now talking about of people losing money on their risky investments in the housing market, um, or banks not being as willing to, um, to fund, uh, rental housing or mortgages for rental housing, these are issues that we can talk about then, and we can find solutions for then. However, the need for affordable housing and the need to stop the displacement of vulnerable renters, that's a need that we have now and that needs to be solved now. Um, thank you so much for your time and for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. Councillor, let's see here, we've got, uh, we have Larissa Blockus, uh, speaker number thirteen.
Mayor Stewart, I understand speaker number thirteen is not on the line.
Okay, speaker fourteen, CJ Tremblay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, uh, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Okay, thanks so much. Uh, thanks to the mayor and our city council, and I'm happy to be here. My name is CJ Tremblay, I'm a renter in Coal Harbour, and I'm here tonight in support of this extension. I enthusiastically support this plan to protect existing renters in these rental zones. I believe that the city should prioritize protecting tenants that are currently in the rental units in these commercial districts by ensuring the one-to-one replacements, uh, in these locations. I know that this extension isn't gonna solve the housing and affordability crisis currently facing Vancouver, um, but not closing this loophole will absolutely exacerbate it. And worse, it will exacerbate it for the city's most vulnerable residents. This is not about an out-of-control narrative, as I suggested earlier, it's about people and policy that offers the most basic of protections for the havelesses, if you will. Thankfully, I have housing and rental security, but I'm here because I believe that housing is a human right. Profit is not a human right, and a profit at the expense of renters and housing security is not how I, as a resident and voter in the city, want my city council to treat its residents and renters, certainly not its most vulnerable renters, because that's the reality of who's gonna be most impacted by not extending protections to this rental housing stock. As you saw in the presentation, the rental stock that exists now in these zones is more affordable than what would likely replace it, and it's trending upwards, and as such, it needs to be protected. Should it not be protected? These are real people, human beings, that will be demovicted out of their homes because landowners, building owners, landlords want to sell their property to condo developers for profit. Uh, we heard the opposition to this plan, uh, the opposition to this is because people want to maximize profits and seemingly at all costs. And, you know, I can appreciate that those in opposition to this extension are concerned about their property values and profits. I would remind them, and I would remind you, that these real estate investments are investments and not entitlements to future profits. Like, sorry, not sorry that there's risk involved and that property values may decrease. But developers and landlords and investors do not have a fundamental right to profit, and humans living in Vancouver absolutely have a right to adequate housing, and demovicting them is not that. The relationship between landlords and tenants was suggested earlier to be symbiotic, but of all five definitions of symbiosis, the only one that actually applies in this case is the relationship of predation. As you know, um, and was discussed earlier, that, oh, the ODP only protects about seventy-seven percent of rentals, and in this case, C2 zone only accounts for four percent of housing. And I hear those people who are saying that, um, housing is, any housing is good, um, in a housing crisis, but that's just not the case. It has to be affordable, and we're not talking just about numbers here, we're talking about protecting the roof over the heads of people living in three thousand units, that's three thousand homes for single workers, new families, and your fellow Vancouverites. This is not about narrative, this is about people. And I would ask you to ask yourself, as our mayor and our council members, if you believe that profit is more important than secure housing for our fellow Vancouverites in more than three thousand units. I just don't believe that it is. I fully support ensuring one-to-one replacement of rental protection. This is just a basic protection, we're not asking, this doesn't speak to replacing at the same cost, this is really a baseline protection, um, for the people who have made these communities their homes, and they deserve the same protections as renters in the cities that are in other zones. As you heard an earlier speaker mention, being a block away can make all of the difference. The housing and affordability, affordability crisis is a big problem, and there's no one single solution, but this is- single solution, but this is without a doubt a clear cut case of, if you don't do this, it will only get worse. Um, and I would ask you to vote in favor of this extension. So thank you very much for your time, um, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, uh, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Uh, thank you so much, and we have, um, uh, 15, Sarah Bergeron.
Mayor Stewart, clerk here, no number 15.
16, Gabriel Konig.
Similarly, no number 16.
17, Rahil Budwani.
Again, no number 17.
Okay, uh, number 18, Mariah Gillis.
And again, no number 18.
Okay, number 19, Fraser McGee.
Number 19 is not on the line, and number 20 has withdrawn.
Okay, number 21, Milovan Marasevich.
Hi, that's me.
Oh, great, please go ahead, up to, yep, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Uh, good evening. Um, I'm a Vancouver resident and a rental housing provider. Um, I'm, I'm speaking in, in opposition to the extension. Uh, I own and live in a mixed-use building located at 4326 West Tenth. Uh, it's my only real estate, the source of my livelihood, and I rely on bank financing to pay for upgrades as allowable rent increases don't come anywhere near to covering operating cost increases. Um, I would be badly financially hurt by the proposed downzoning, but rather than talk about that, uh, I'm going to talk about the harmful effects on C2 business districts of discouraging redevelopment of old mixed-use buildings like mine, as this proposal would do. My building was erected in 1957. As is typical of mixed-use buildings of the 1950s up to the 1970s, the commercial spaces have ceiling heights of only eight feet, electrical services of only 60 amps, lack air conditioning and ventilation systems, have poor soundproofing and poor energy efficiency, and are not competitive in today's leasing market. Even back in the 1990s, before the bricks, before the bricks and mortar retail sector was decimated by internet commerce, it began to be a challenge to find tenants for this kind of outdated commercial space. Now, when small retail tenants have almost completely disappeared from the leasing market, it's become practically impossible. The city effectively only allows old commercial spaces like mine to be used as retail, as a change to any other use is either not allowed or is prohibitively expensive. The proposed downzoning by discouraging redevelopment will have the effect of preserving outdated and un-leasable street-level commercial space at a time when many C2 business districts are in serious trouble. The business district where my building is located, Point Gray Village is in crises, is dying, having dropped from 200 businesses to the present 117. The board of directors of the Point Gray Business Improvement Association have authorized me to tell you that they are greatly concerned about the effect that the proposed downzoning would have on the long-term viability of Point Gray Village, as it would discourage the necessary redevelopment of commercial, street-level space. In order to have prosperous and vibrant C2 business districts, we need modern, commercial street-level spaces that will attract not only anyone who does want to open a retail store, but also cafes, restaurants, daycare centers, yoga and art studios, medical offices, and a wide range of service providers. For the sake of our struggling C2 business districts, I urge city council not to approve the proposed downzoning, or at the very least, to exempt mixed-use buildings from it. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your, uh, for your comments. You do have a couple of questions, councillor, Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, mayor, and thanks for being here to speak. Um, just wanted two quick remarks. You said you have a mixed-use building, so you have rental units and commercial units, I see are used, I'm assuming, on the main floor at street level and then rental units above, is that what you're?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, and do you have, I assume that, when you said that your building is sort of becoming un-leasable or not attractive in terms of attracting new tenants for revitalization in the area, is your building old and aging at this point, and did you have plans to redevelop that you feel you wouldn't be able to now? Just trying to get a little bit more perspective.
Sure, uh, the building was built in 1957, so yes, it's old. Um, I don't have plans to redevelop. Uh, as I mentioned, I rely on bank financing. I relied on bank financing to pay for the new roof in 2018, uh, all, uh, I renovate the suites one at a time as they become vacant, I borrow the money for that. Um, the building, um, my insurance cost went up 50%, it's now the second largest item after property taxes, and, uh, it's zero rent increase, um, are allowed. Even in prior years, when you were allowed 2%, 3%, up to 4%, that still wasn't nearly enough to cover the increases in operating costs, so I have to borrow the money, I have to borrow the money to improve the building. I live in the building, I like to live in a nice building, I put in new carpeting, I keep it very clean, I put in new flooring in the basement hallway, because I use all that myself, I take pride in my building. But the simple fact is that these buildings are a real challenge to operate, to operate, uh, financially, uh, in the current, uh, you know, zero, but even prior, very smaller rent increase environment. Um, if the commercial spaces come vacant, they almost become impossible to lease. Nobody wants to lease spaces like that anymore, as I, as I was saying. Let me make it clear, I'm lucky, I presently do have a tenant, but when that tenant leaves, I don't know how I'm going to, to, uh, lease out those spaces. Uh, these buildings, they're, they have, uh, you can, you can improve the suites, you can, you can bring them up to a modern standard, but what do you do with commercial spaces that have eight-foot ceilings? You can't raise the building. Um, you frequently don't have enough power to the building to upgrade the electrical services, services from 60 amps to 100 amps, and a lot of tenants coming in, they want 100 amps, you can't do it, it's simply impossible. And I had to turn away a delicatessen as a potential tenant, I had to turn away two yoga studios, I had to turn away a physiotherapist's office, because the city won't allow me to change the use from anything except retail. And you can't find retail tenants anymore, they've disappeared. I'm sorry, this is a very long-winded answer to your question, I'm a bit passionate about it because I'm living, okay, yeah, please go ahead.
And I'm, I'm going to jump in, because I have a limited amount of time, because you, you hit on a couple of different issues there, and I think a very good conversation in another forum with respect to allowable uses for the retail, but paying on the rent, the, um, sorry, the rental unit component, you're, I just want to be clear, you're saying that if you had a negative hit in equity and you're relying on bank borrowing to upgrade your units or to do capital repairs to the building, you're saying that that would impede your ability to do ongoing capital repairs in the current environment with the increasing costs? Is that, is that a fair summary of what you're saying?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, that's really helpful, and I'd be happy to have another conversation offline around retail uses, because that's a bit beyond the scope of this specific project, but I appreciate you raising it.
Thank you.
Sure, it would, it would be my pleasure.
Thanks. Uh, councillor Fry.
You're welcome.
Councillor Fry?
Yeah, thanks, mayor, and I appreciate councillor Kirby Young's, uh, questions, did sort of cover a lot of, Mr. Marasevich, I did look up your building online, and it, it does look like you take a lot of pride in that building, and I appreciate on the Google, I could see a dog in the window there, uh, it looks like a really nice building, and, um...
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, how, how long have you had the building?
Uh, it was purchased, uh, by my late mother in 1958. I've been managing it since 1978, and, um, it, it's, it's, it's my hope to, uh, you know, that'll be here for some years to come. Um, I, um, yeah, but, uh, there, there will come a time when, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I guess, I just, I, I mean, I, I look at the building, I, I hear you talk, I see the pride you put in the building, and I see the dog in the window, and I, I'm assuming that you've, you've, you've got tenants who have been there for a while, and their rents must be fairly reasonable, I'm guessing.
Um, like, like many buildings, uh, I have some tenants who have been here for a period of, uh, 10 years, and, um, they, they, they enjoy very low rents, and, uh, that's 25% of the building, that's three suites out of 12. Uh, the rest of them are all at market rents.
Okay, okay, so, but what I'm, what I'm hearing is that you do need that, uh, the equity in that building, uh, as it's currently zoned, is what enables you to borrow against it to support the maintenance of the building, like a new roof and those kind of things to, to keep the, the, the building as it is.
Uh, yes, yes, that is correct. Uh, in the summer, uh, I'm going to be, uh, taking advantage of Fortis's program, and, uh, uh, as my contribution to combating global warming, uh, I'll be getting a new high-efficiency boiler to heat the building. I will be borrowing the money to finance that on a credit line, a secured credit line, uh, which is, uh, uh, in place from the same financial institution which has the mortgage on the building. So everything of that nature, every, everything except, uh, run-of-the-mill garden variety maintenance and repairs, I do with borrowed money.
So, okay, I just, I, I, I think this is an important articulation, things like upgrading the 60-amp service, the, the new heating system, these all cost money, and you wouldn't be able to get the money to do that work if this property were effectively downzoned, is, is what I'm hearing.
Uh, yes, that's, that's correct, councillor Fry. With the one proviso, that, um, you can't upgrade, uh, the 60-amp services to 100 amps in the commercial areas unless you have enough power to the building. Um, my electrician was astonished that I had a 400-amp service, he was expecting a 260-amp service. I was able to upgrade one, uh, service from 60 to 100 amps, but I couldn't do it in the other one. Um, my point is that regarding the vi- long-term viability of commercial areas, that, uh, a lot of these ground-level spaces in old buildings like mine, they don't have enough power to the building to upgrade from 60 to 100 amps, and a lot of tenants want 100 amps, so what do you get? You end up getting more vacancies in these besieged commercial districts like Point Gray Village, Dunbar, uh, and, and some others you're, you're well aware of, because nobody wants to rent those commercial spaces. I mean, I repeat, I'm lucky, I presently have a tenant, but, uh, you know, the day will come, it's, it's, well, it's, it's here, actually, when those spaces are almost unrentable. If you go along Point Gray Village, and, uh, you'll see how many vacancies there are, and as I say, uh, as I said, the board of directors of the BIA here, uh, they're really concerned, uh, uh, about, about these, these, uh, those old outdated commercial spaces being, uh, preserved, uh, and, uh, remaining vacant.
Mr. Marasevich, what, what is the percentage of the, like, how, how reliant are you on those commercial rentals to subsidize the, the building itself?
Uh, they, um, they provide about 17% of, uh, the gross income on the building, and, um, after you, after you deduct, uh, operating expenses, uh, monthly mortgage, uh, credit line, uh, expenses, credit line interest, um, they're really critical, because that's, that's where, uh, let's call it the profit lies. And then if, if one of those commercial spaces, or if both of them come vacant, uh, then you're really in a pickle. In short, it's really hard to survive, yes.
Thanks, Mr. Marasevich, I'm out of time.
Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, you have, uh, questions from councillor Swanson?
Please go ahead.
Councillor Swanson, oh, you're on mute, maybe? Councillor Swanson, you're on mute?
Sorry.
No problem.
Um, thanks so much for coming. Um, so just, um, you don't have to answer any of this if you don't want, you've got two commercial tenants and a few residential tenants, is that right?
Uh, 12 residential units, uh, two commercial tenants, yes.
And you're one of the residential ones?
Yes, yes, correct. I, I, I live in, uh, yes, I, well, I guess I'm my own tenant in a way, yes. Uh, there's, so, aside from me, there's 11.
And you got the building from your mom?
Correct.
And she got it in 1958?
Correct.
Do you know, do you know how much it cost then and how much it's worth now?
Uh, well, uh, I've got two things in 19...
What the assessed value is?
Actually, um, what the assessed value is, well, it's dropped from, uh, 10 million down to seven, I believe, seven point something in the last year. And, uh, no, actually, uh, uh, I, I don't know what the cost was in, uh, 1958, uh, but you might be interested to know that I have also, I inherited from her, her 1957 Chevy two-door Villere Sport Coupe, it cost, uh, $2,000 in 1957, that's how much she paid, I think it's worth about 50 now. Um, yeah, still have that as well.
Okay, so, but you've got a $7 million building, basically, that you could sell if you wanted, and you could get a condo someplace, or, you know, you're not, you're not suffering.
Um, is that what you're suggesting that I do?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to put this in perspective compared to tenants who don't, who are paying 60% of their rent, of their income for rent, or 38% of their income for rent, like a couple of our speakers were talking about.
Um...
And the purpose of this, this law, right, is to keep it so, um, there's an incentive to have rental apartments in buildings like yours, so you don't convert them to strata and evict the tenants. I mean, you could still do that, but you'd have to replace the rental if this went through.
Well, it's, it's not my intention, I, I mean, if you're, if you're asking, you know, how is it, or rather, is it just that, that I should have a place to live, and that if I were to sell the building, then I would get, uh, well, actually, I wouldn't get $7 million, because first of all, I'd have to pay off the mortgage, I'd have to pay off the credit line, and I'd also have to pay capital gains tax, so I wouldn't be left with $7 million at the end. Uh, I might be left enough for a house in Vancouver, and then, uh, what would I live on? Where would the rest of the income from? I mean, how would I pay the property taxes on, on, on the house? Um, uh, you know, I, I, the reason I, uh, I keep it is to have an income, and, uh, you know, it involves work, it's, 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 it's work to, you know, I, I do my own repairs here as much as I can, so as not to have to call a plumber or a plaster or painter. Uh, I manage it myself, I do as many repairs as I can, uh, myself as a handyman in order to keep the operating costs down. You know, I, you know, I think that being a rental housing provider is, is, uh, uh, something which, you know, which is not a dishonorable form of making a living, that's what I think.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, that's it for questions. Appreciate it, thank you for calling in. Um, just looking at the clerks here, we're at, uh, 9:49, uh, so we are on speaker number, clerks, are we at 22, I think?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, 22 was shown as withdrawn, that was a mistake on staff's part.
Okay.
22 is Arsha Dillon.
Great, uh, Arsha Dillon, please go ahead.
Hello, can you folks hear me?
We sure can.
Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, hello to all the councilmen and councilwomen, uh, thank you, Tina, for fitting me in. Um, hello to all the councilmen and councilwomen, uh, thank you, Tina, for fitting me in. Um, I want to present a different perspective on this whole debate. I am an immigrant who was born and raised in India. At the age of twenty, twenty years ago, I decided to move to Canada. Been here since, this is gonna be my home forever and ever. My children are gonna be born and raised here, and their children, and so on and so forth. The reason why I choose to move from a third-world country to a first-world democratic country is so that I can have right to free speech, right to safety and liberty, and right to the protection of my property. I was never under the illusion that I would have the right to subsidized rentals, as well as, I never assumed that I, that I would have a right to live in the city of Vancouver. I came with three hundred and fifty dollars in my pocket, as is a typical immigrant story. And right now, I'm proud to say I live in downtown Vancouver with my wife, and I own a rental property out of the city limits. Everything that we have were busted our rear ends to save for and to buy. Nothing was handed down to us by our parents, or by our grandparents. And for people who got properties inherited from their parents or grandparents, I have no issues with them, so be it. For people who complain about not being able to buy, who complain about not being able to afford properties, time and time again, I have noticed that they do not have sound fiscal education. They do not have the discipline to forego the pleasures of life that everybody wants to enjoy. Nice cars, nice clothes, nice vacations, nice dine-outs, drinks, concerts, but save. Tighten your belt, save every dime. The two thousand dollars that you paid to live in downtown Vancouver, if you're lucky, otherwise you pay about twenty-five hundred dollars, you could rent in Abbotsford for less than half of the cost, save for down payment, buy your primary residence, buy your principal residence. Then you work upwards. Nobody talks about that. It's as if we have crybabies on one, at one end, who lack the fiscal discipline to save and increase their earnings to get into the property market. And on the other end, we have demons, proverbial demons in the shape of landlords. I don't think they are. Like, like many other sectors, property owning and property renting is a legitimate business. Nobody's forcing you to rent off of landlords. You are on your volition, choosing to move to a municipality and wanting to live there. You can go live in Mission, you can live in Agassi, you can live in Merritt, you can live wherever you want. You're choosing to be here. I think we need to think along those lines. Another problem that we don't talk about is the dirty money that has come from overseas that continues to pour in, in the tune of billions of dollars every month. People come in with a million dollars, for example, they leverage it twenty times, they buy a property, then they get into flipping games. That has been happening, continues to happen. The fancy cars that we see being driven around in downtown, the Lambos, the Ferraris, the Benches, these are not the people who are locals, these are not your crooked landlords who, who you're so upset about. The federal government is to be blamed for this, for crafting these kind of terrible immigration policies, where instead of attracting people who are willing to work hard, who are willing to come into this country, protect it, nourish it, nurture it, create new things, innovate, they're, instead of doing that, they're allowing people to come in with both loads of legitimate and many both loads of illegitimate money, and turning real estate markets on its head. I would love for a councilman or a councilwoman to ask me a question. Other than that, that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Great, I don't see any, uh, questions for you, so we'll... Councillor, we are at five to ten, so we have a decision to make. Uh, we have one, two, three, four, five, six speakers left on the list, which is, uh, thirty minutes, uh, probably without questions. Uh, and then, um, in order to close the speakers list, I would have to call, uh, three times, as usual, so I would suggest we would have forty minutes, perhaps, of speakers at the outside if we don't ask questions.
Listen to extend, to hear from speakers.
Okay, we, now we need a two-thirds, uh, to do that, so just so councillor knows. Okay, we have a seconder. Okay, councillor, so I'm gonna do yeas and nays, uh, all in favor of extending, say yea.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're extended, I'm gonna go to speaker number twenty-three. John Stovell?
Oh, good evening, Mayor and councillor, can you hear me?
Sure can, uh, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, to the mayor, I, I, I recall a speech that you made, perhaps at the Board of Trade, or somewhere, where you talked about, uh, the fact that, um, we need to build rental, we need to build a lot of rental. And I think you alluded to the fact that something like ninety, or north of ninety percent of the property in the city that can accommodate rental housing is owned by the private sector. That's a fact. If we want to have a utopian, um, world for tenants, where, where we don't need to find a balance between, uh, uh, you know, the business of, 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 of real estate and the business of renting and, and what rents are, and, and we can fund that all through the public sector and through our taxes as a collective society, that's fine. But until that time, we have to find out how to get the people who own ninety percent of the property to build the rental housing that we need. Continuing to persecute private capital, um, hogtying capital and painting people into corners with, with motions like this, and the recent REIT motion, which, which, which unfairly and inaccurately and ignorantly targeted, um, the REIT and institutional investment sector, who are the only people who are funding equity for rental at scale, large rental projects, and also, a lot of the time, the debt of those projects. These are very misguided ideas. And, you know, while that's happening, and I, and I think David Sander and, and Bo Jarvis have done, you know, a more than adequate job of describing why, exactly in detail, this is a misguided policy. But the irony to me is while we're doing this ridiculous, uh, C2 motion that will do nothing to create any, any, any new rental units, um, we have a motion on ICE that was completely supported by industry, uh, by the, by the landlord industry, uh, to increase FSR in C2 to six stories for projects that would be a hundred percent rental. That motion has been kicked down the road, and down the road, and down the road, and all the while, while we're working on this. So, you know, to Mr. Jarvis's point, this is the kind of proactive and positive thing that was supported by industry, and on balance, vastly supported by the public. And why did it get delayed? More consultation, more consultation, which is just in my mind, an excuse for a lack of, uh, political courage to do what needs to be done to, to solve the problem. And in addition to that, you know, this myopic view of downzoning and constraining people and tying up their assets is all happening while, as I think this councillor knows, and I, I think the mayor knows, there are thousands and thousands and thousands of rental units in the, in the development pipeline, hundreds and hundreds and thousands of which would be below-market, MERC, workforce housing, that are tied up in the planning department, on matters of trees and driveways and shadows, and view cones, and tower separation, and amount of windows, and how far buildings are apart from each other. That's the problem. Why are we spending all this time, you know, persecuting, uh, and punishing people who have decided to stay in the most inefficient, smallest and tenuous form of rental housing, instead of actually working on creating thousands of new units? So it's, it's misguided, it's, it's fruitless, I think, as I said, Mr. Jarvis and Mr. Sander have told you exactly why. I, I would like councillor to focus, as Mr. Jarvis has suggested, on how we can build thousands of new units, persecuting REITs, persecuting institutional investors, and holding up thousands and thousands of units that are, that are gummed up in planning due to your policies and policies of past councils, is the real issue. Thank you.
Thank you, I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Um, I have twenty-four and twenty-five have withdrawn, so we're on number twenty-six, Cameron Thorn.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and councillor, can you hear me?
Sure can, uh, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thanks, thanks so much, so my name's Cameron Thorn, I'm vice president of Develop with Strand. Um, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm speaking in opposition to the recommendation to extend the rental housing stock ODP to the C2 zones. Um, councillor, um, I think despite the differences in the approach or ideology that may exist amongst you, I genuinely believe that you all want to see an increase in the supply of rental housing. And I also believe that you want to establish, uh, a policy and regulatory framework that encourages the private sector to build rental housing. So my great concern is that the recommendations to you this evening don't do, don't accomplish either one of those things. Rather than encouraging or facilitating developers to leverage capital with their, with, with its inherent risks, these recommendations will undermine both the, the incentive and the desire to, to redevelop, and will also, um, reduce the quantity of capital that can be leveraged to the construction of new rental housing. Like you, developers want to build rental housing. However, these recommendations will, will introduce new and unnecessary obstacles to our efforts. Um, in my view, policy instruments that alter property uses and negatively impact property values should be considered very carefully and undertaken only when it's demonstrated that there's a serious problem that the current policy environment is not addressing. However, that's not the case here. The current policy environment has resulted in a net gain of over six hundred rental housing units in the C2 zones in the last decade. Under that current policy environment, that trend of building more rental housing in the C2 areas will continue. Conversely, if these recommendations should be adopted, there'll be a downward trend in the rental supply in C2 areas. So, in closing, ironically, the key councillor objective of increasing the supply of rental housing will be severely undermined by the recommendations before you tonight. Um, I would suggest strongly that it is in the public interest, and in fact, in the interest of the renters of the city of Vancouver, that councillor not adopt these recommendations. Thanks so much for your consideration of my point.
Thank you. Uh, I'm just checking here, I don't see any questions for you this evening, so I'm gonna move to the next speaker.
I'm figuring out something, are you going to go to bed now?
Oh, we can hear, uh, Thor Bowe, is that Thor Bowe, the next speaker?
Yes, I am, I am here.
Oh, great, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, councillor and, uh, mayor. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, my name is Thor Bowe, I'm a resident of Vancouver. I'm born and raised here, and even in my cumulative ten years of being outside Vancouver, my Vancouver-ness has always been in my heart. And it's even an asset to my career when I worked outside B.C. or Canada in areas of community development and urban planning. I had an uncle who in nineteen eighty-two exited being an owner of a forty-suite rental building in the West End. So I've got a lot of insight to Vancouver's owner's side, because I lived in that building, and my mother was the manager of the building. I returned home ten years ago to help take care of my mother. Now, over ninety percent of my income goes to shelter, and it's precarious shelter, I've been couch surfing for ten years. I support the bylaw to extend the rental housing stock, ODP, to include the C2 properties, because I want any new construction to require one-to-one replacement of rental residential units. If there's an alternative to this ODP, because, uh, I understand the business side. I also have an MBA, and it's in sustainability, and I paid very close attention to real estate argument. There's a lot of opportunity here, and I'm somewhat impressed by Mr. Jarvis. He was strident, he had a lot to say, but I think that bankers are not the only sources of funding. And I doubt that Mr. Jarvis really has to be concerned whether he has, uh, enough money to pay rent towards the end of this month, enough money for food, or even the possibility of a rent eviction, which has occurred to me with a bad-faced landlord. Um, I'm thinking here, though, in capitalism, if it could have delivered dignified rental units at affordable prices, well, once upon it did, under the Bretton Woods condition. But the Bretton Woods era also gave capital a reason to go on strike, to stop investing when they would get zero, or even lose money in investments. So it needed an economic, macroeconomic reset, and it got it. But we then find out that labor has stagnant income, or even decreasing wages. So we needed another macro act, reset, which should have happened in two thousand and eight. So we're in a, a macroeconomic interregum. In Canada, uh, you know, Mr. Jarvis said that there was concern that perhaps the banks would not fund these things, and I got the impression he was implying some kind of redlining of an entire city over C2 zones? I think that's a little bit absurd. Uh, nonetheless, I do agree with Mr. Jarvis, there's legitimacy that we get everyone to, at the table to, to find solutions. I'm still asking you to vote in favor of the C2 area, to protect three thousand housing units already, and add existing affordability of forty percent less in rental prices than buildings built in two thousand and eighteen. We need modest housing. We don't need luxury appearance and materials, that's normal when new construction occurs. Or the new housing, sorry, the existing affordable housing stock that is being taken over by the RIA, which was a part of the area of my, uh, my exploration during my MBA. We don't need hyperinflated prices, and maybe a loss of equity would be a good thing. Money is abstract, it's something that's not actually real. Money is an artifact of our culture, it's very convenient and useful for us, but it's not real. Its prices, its valuation is actually very arbitrary, but people are real. So councillors, if you do pass the C2 inclusion, then you're signaling that your patience for business as usual is ending. It will motivate real estate capital to make some substantial concessions, and it might even include increasing wages to workers, so that people can afford the sky-high rent prices that we've got. My position is principled, it's about human rights and government responsibility to ensure conditions exist for community health in all dimensions of well-being. Thank you for putting me inside your listening, and good luck in your deliberation.
Thank you so much, I don't see anybody on the list to ask you questions, so I'm gonna go to the next speaker, uh, who is David Wesick.
Hello?
Hi there, you have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and councillor, um, I probably will take my five minutes, uh, everybody's probably itching to get out of here, but, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, I am very strongly opposed, uh, to the recommendations, um, in this report. Uh, full disclosure, I am in the real estate industry, um, but I also do reside in Vancouver with my wife and kids. Uh, born and raised in Vancouver, I live in Kitzalano. Uh, our situation, so my wife and I own two buildings at the northwest corner of Fourth and Alma Street. Um, these buildings are zone C2, uh, each of them, they're about eighty years old, uh, and have about twenty-six units in total. Um, you know, I should note that my family, and I, we live about five blocks away from these buildings, so th- this is our neighborhood as well. Uh, the buildings, they're in fair shape given their age, uh, we take good care of them, but they won't last forever. Um, we need to consider development at some point. We did purchase the properties in twenty sixteen, uh, knowing that they were C2 zones, um, yeah, permitting the two-and-a-half FSR. And if this motion passes, uh, it's gonna result in a loss in value to us of above five million dollars, which is significant. Um, that would be the implication to me and my family. If it passes tonight, I'm gonna get a call from my banker tomorrow. But you know, that's my situation, and regardless of what happens, I'll be okay. I'm not looking for sympathy, we have had good fortune, we will be fine. Um, this, um, it's funny, I had some things prepared to, to say tonight. Um, given how this conversation has gone, I'm, I'm probably gonna go off-script a little bit. Um, you know, it, it's, it, it really seems like this is, you know, this has descended into a bit of a debate, and just a, a, a standard kind of landlord versus tenant fight, and, and the old rhetoric and narratives that you constantly hear. Um, it, you know, instead of focusing on, on what the issue is, where, how this started, which was a perceived concern over massive rental loss coming into C2 zones. Um, so that's what I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna take it back to what the issue really is, because we're, we're kind of descending into, you know, a broader debate, which I don't think is helpful, and not the purpose of this. Um, so what's being proposed tonight, in my opinion, is, is, is misinformed and reckless, it's- It's, it is a downzoning of 376 properties in the C2 zone which have existing rental. So that, this move will cost 376 taxpayers upwards of a half a billion dollars, and I don't know if that's ever been done before. The downzoning came from a motion that was first put forward in May 2019. And that motion was based on a concern that the city was losing all of this affordable rental to condo development in C2 zones and other arterials. So the motion stated that, you know, C2 zones are under increasingly high redevelopment pressure, and there's got to be quick action. So that motion then snowballed into this public hearing that we're at today. And so, but the suggestions over concerning C2 zones that started all of this and put this all into motion are simply wrong. As it turns out, only 81 units in C2 zones have been lost over 10 years. That's eight units a year. So we're talking about half a billion dollars for eight units a year. You know, that is not intense redevelopment pressure as the original motion would suggest. As other speakers have mentioned and staff have mentioned, you know, you've seen a gain in 700 units in C2. So this suggests to me that C2 is actually a success story in building new rental and is not a big source of these rental losses. You know, I also actually think it's worth noting that in the same table in the, in the report to council, I think it was figure, I don't know, from figure three. You know, there were actually more rental units lost in RS zones over that same 10-year period. So more, more units lost, more rental units lost in RS over C2. And actually even more lost in RT zones versus C2. So, you know, based on the logic of all this, does that mean that the inclusion of RS zones in the rental ODP, is that coming next? Are we going to be here in two years talking about that? You know, that, that doesn't make sense to me. I don't think there is the problem with the zoning that, that the original motion suggests. You know, I think it's also important to point out the timing in which it's taken us to get here. So, you know, as I said, the motion was put forward in May 2019. Here we are at a public hearing, less than two years later, getting ready to downzone 376 properties. So downzoning 376 properties is happening faster than it usually takes to rezone one property, you know. So it, given all of this, like perhaps it would give us cause to, you know, to step back and rethink this. Do we understand the consequences? Do we understand the problem that we're trying to solve here? You know, I'm quite sup... Am I done? Am I out of time?
Yep, you're, you're, you do have a question from Counselor Weep, though. Go ahead, Counselor Weep.
Yeah, one of the quick questions. One of the other concerns we, council had been brought up during that last talk was the loss of affordable commercial space and the connections to our neighborhoods. Do you want to speak to a little bit about the commercial side of this?
Sure, I mean, I, I think similar to, you know, housing, you know, older commercial, well, similar to older housing, older apartment buildings, it's, it's got its challenges, and these buildings were not meant to last 100 years, particularly if they're wood-framed. I think the same thing applies to some of the older buildings that have commercial in it too. You know, these, like, these spaces are simply not viable anymore. You can't, you know, you can't house, you know, at least amount to tenants who, you know, you can't accommodate their needs. They need to be redeveloped, and you need to build new retail with it. But the thing is, though, like, it, it's not financially viable. It, it, a shovel does not go on the ground unless there is an economic return. I know most of the people tonight speaking will hate me for saying that, but nothing gets built, no unit of anything, no, no home, no commercial space unless there's an economic incentive. Until every, like, all space is subsidized by the, by the government, you're relying on private sector to do it. And there needs to be a bit of economic incentive to do it. And, you know, whether, so whether it's new commercial or new residential, whether, like, it's condo or apartment, unless there is an economic incentive for somebody to put, like, their nest egg at, at risk, borrow another $15 million, and then, like, roll the dice, like, nothing will get built. So, but all these commercial properties too, like, even with the ground floor retail, the same issues. They're, they're obsolete now. Absolutely obsolete.
Thank you. That's it for questions, I think? Yep, that's it for questions. Thanks very much for calling in. We've got Sarah Sagai, Speaker number 29.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Thanks for staying up, and you've got the floor for five minutes.
Thanks so much. Sarah Sagai here, tenant advocate. I am obviously speaking in support of the proposal. I have witnessed, in just the last couple of years, several buildings going through evictions because of the absence of this protection. To name a few, 3532 East Hastings, 815 Commercial Drive, 1875 U Street, 2525 Carolina Street, and 1770 Davy Street, also known as Berkeley Tower, which the mayor personally wrote to the former housing minister about their eviction, asking to find a way to stop it. It didn't stop. They got re-evicted by Mr. Stovall, who spoke here, and last August, the last tenant in the building died in the hospital sooner than he could move out. These tenants are my people and my community, and they're being pushed out by the policies of your administration. And your TRP policy, I heard one of the developers mention that earlier, as your own staff would attest to it, when there's no housing, you can't find replacement housing, and it's basically just a buyout policy. These buildings are the last of the existing affordable stocks that are being put up for redevelopment by the lack of this protection. I've heard so many times during rezonings for expensive rental buildings in low-income, low-rent neighborhoods that, that end up evicting and pushing out current residents, that if we say no to this project, the developer could just build a condo without a rezoning. Two years ago, I was speaking at council, personally advocating for tenants at 3532 East Hastings. Council asked the developer to allow the eight tenants to come back to the 30-something rental building that was going to be built at a comparable rent. Developer said, no, we're going to build condos if you ask us to do that. So here's your chance, Council. You, this is entirely in your hands. You cannot allow condos to be built in places where affordable rentals exist. You have the power to prevent that from happening. 22% of our existing rental stock do not have this basic protection. Are we prepared to lose these units? What, what do you think is going to happen to our city if that happens? Aren't we supposed to increase the supply of housing and not lose that existing supply? And also, according to a city report from May 2019, between 2009 and 2019, approximately 589 existing units were affected by developments in areas not protected by the ODP. Unfortunately, this proposal only extends the protection to 4% out of the 22%, but as the report says, this represents 3,050 rental units. That's a lot of people who are going to be impacted. And we also know, as the report said, they typically are 40% lower rents than average, and they tend to have very long-term tenants and low income. So developers are speaking here tonight, they've submitted in opposition. You also have tenants there that have, I saw at least one submission from someone who's directly impacted by the lack of this protection, asking council to protect them. I want you to consider the fact that most of the people who have been impacted by the absence of this protection very likely fit into one or more of these categories. They're pushed out of the city, don't have secure housing, live in SROs, live on the streets or with family and friends, working too many hours to pay an unaffordable rent, to pay attention to politics, or dead. They can't come and tell you what happened to them, especially because the many times that they have, you haven't heard them. I personally think it's a miracle that you get even one tenant writing to you, telling you that this affects them personally. I am someone who knows a lot about policy and city bureaucracy, but honestly, if I were, if I personally had insecure housing, I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be able to speak to you. So consider, consider the fact that a lot of people here, it's their job to lobby and protect their profits, and some other people, it's, it literally takes them so many hoops to jump through to even understand what the heck is a C2 zone, and to be able to, to advocate for themselves. So which will you listen to? In the city survey, you saw that renters overwhelmingly support this proposal, and property owners don't. Not really shocking, but it's your, the question is which will you listen to and who do you represent? It comes down to which you think is a human right, access to housing or entitlement to profits off of unceded land. I personally think the entitlement that we're hearing tonight is a sounding. Thanks for listening, and let's focus on no more preventable eviction.
Thanks so much. I don't see anybody on the list to ask a question, so I'm going to go to the next speaker, number 30, Evan Gaines-Bow.
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here. I understand that Speaker number 30 is not on the line.
Okay, Council, that's it for our list. So I'm going to call now for a first time. If anybody else would like to speak to this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, code 15917, hashtag, to get on the list. And I'm going to ask the clerk now, is there, after this first call, is there anybody on the list?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we have Speaker Neil Paddam on the line.
Great. Thank you, Neil Paddam. Please go ahead, whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can, yep, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Neil. I'm currently a renter living in Renfrew, Collingwood. I'm here to support this proposal. As we all know, Vancouver's in a housing crisis. And tonight, we've heard a lot of talk about housing stock, units, zoning, development. It all gets pretty, pretty confusing. What we often forget is that every unit demolished is a renter and their family who's now losing their home. There's a human behind every eviction. In fact, I'm presently being evicted myself, and I really wouldn't recommend the process. You don't understand until you go through it yourself. For the past few weeks, I've been refreshing Craigslist every day. I spend a significant portion of my time responding to ads, attending showings, filling out applications. I'm not looking forward to paying 20% more to rent per month. And part of being a renter in Vancouver is this constant feeling of precarity. At any moment, you can lose your housing, and you're left to try and find somewhere to live, typically for a higher rate than your current rent. I don't currently live in a C2 zone, but I can sympathize with tenants in those areas who might face eviction themselves. Many of these tenants are lower income, long-term. They've lived in these units for a long time. They're our neighbors, they work in our community, and they're part of the character of our city. As noted in the proposal and noted by the people who've called in, the current proposal doesn't even provide protection or sufficient protection to the people living in these zones. Even a one-to-one replacement isn't enough because if they're offered rentals at 20% below market rent, it's still going to be more than what they currently pay. So that could lead to them having to move out of their neighborhood, move into an SRO, move out of the city, or even become homeless. So while I support this proposal, I also recognize that it's not sufficient protection for those tenants in C2 zones. I, I also want to address the point of property values. Whenever we discuss housing, there's a lot of focus on property values and profits. I'd like to point out that in the past two decades, property values in Vancouver have increased between 3 and 400%. With our extremely low vacancies and sky-high property values, developing and renting in Vancouver is and always has been a profitable enterprise. In these C2 zones, landlords have been collecting rents from these long-term rentals for decades, enjoying considerable gains in their property value over the same period. If they don't have money to maintain these units, that's a reflection on their practices as landlords, not the fault of municipal regulations or tenants. Extending protections already afforded to other areas isn't going to be a catastrophic event. Housing isn't just something that can be bought and sold. Every rental unit lost represents a person, a worker, a family, who's forced to move. As a tenant currently being evicted, I feel great solidarity with tenants in these C2 zones who may be facing eviction as well. I feel grateful for the basic protections afforded to me by our laws, and I believe that tenants deserve the same protections regardless of where they live in Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in this evening. I don't see questions. I'm going to ask the clerk if there's anybody else on the list.
Mayor Stewart, there is one other speaker on the list.
Okay, I'll make this my second call then, second call for speakers. And Speaker, go ahead, whenever you're ready, up to five minutes. Speaker, if you'd just let us know your name and if you're a resident of Vancouver, and you may be on mute.
Hello?
Hi there, up to five minutes, your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, and please go ahead.
My name is Larissa, and I live in Vancouver, and I support the extension of the rental housing stock official development plan to acquire rental replacement in C2, C2B, C2C, and C2, C1 commercial districts. Unfortunately, 22% of our existing rental stock does not have basic protection. 4% will help to protect over 3,050 rental units with an average rent that's 40% lower than market rates. Every unit is important to the people who live there. Loss of housing is a traumatizing experience, as the last speaker just spoke about, and it can be prevented with further renters' protections. Governments need to stop incentivizing the destruction of affordable housing, so this motion is a great step in protecting renters. We're still in this pandemic, and housing for every single resident should be council's top priority. We need a guarantee of one-to-one replacement for affordable rentals. And conversations I've heard where thousands of dollars per month are discussed as affordable is not realistic for low-income residents. Whether a person is able to work or save has no bearing on their right to housing in the communities where they are connected to friends and family. Separating low-income people denies dignity and is a heartless approach to housing. I remind you that BIPOC, queer, and disabled people are more vulnerable to systemic economic exclusion and are less likely to be able to speak to council. Reets were mentioned. Reets are predatory and focused only on shareholder income rather than quality of life or affordability for renters. Their involvement always results in displacement and aggressive gentrification and rental rate increases. Your most vulnerable constituents need protection from REITs. People are fleeing Vancouver because of the housing crisis. I lose at least two friends per year who leave specifically because of the housing crisis making the city unlivable. When friends become pregnant, it should be a source of joy, but instead, now I wonder when they're going to decide that they can't afford to stay in Vancouver because of housing instability. Searching for housing in Vancouver is a harrowing experience, and the worst thing is that it's completely preventable. In a city survey, renters overwhelmingly support this proposal. 53% of your constituents are renters, and we all deserve protection regardless of our ability to own property. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you. So I'm going to make another call. This is the third final call for speakers this evening. And the livestream and Twitter has the, all the information you need to call in, clerks. Do we have anybody else on the line?
Mayor Stewart, we do have another speaker on the line.
Great, thanks so much for calling in. And if you just wanted to give your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver, if we can, you can have your five minutes.
Yes, my name's Stephen Bohus. I am a resident of Vancouver, and I, I live in Granby Woodland, in a rental zone in RM4. But I strongly support this motion, and I believe that people who live in the C2 zone just a block or so away from me should have the same rights as I do in, in terms of one-to-one replacement. The renters on Commercial Drive add a lot to the vitality of this neighborhood, and it would be a real shame not to have that rental protection. So here, here what I'm seeing is that I've been, am I online still?
You are.
Okay, so these policies for the rental protection extension is, it's a great idea. And I want to just address some of the things that came up in the staff presentation and also with some of the other speakers. In terms of looking at what's happened, a couple of nights ago, there was a rezoning of a property on Canby Street, that 4118 Canby, and that property owner actually had approved CD1 for Strata. And then they decided, two nights ago, to, at a public hearing, to change that building into a 100% rental building at the same height and FSR. And when asked, the applicant said that, well, they're doing this, you know, because it financially makes sense. So I'm, you know, a little bit skeptical about these claims that, about the huge losses that are being claimed by, in the staff report, because here you can actually see an example of where a change was made to go from Strata back into rental. In terms of looking at the hu- huge cost- In terms of looking at the huge cost of everything to renters, if you look at number of people who've actually, I've met someone living in an RV, and I struck up a conversation a couple of months ago. And he was evicted from a C2 zone and is now living on the street. Cities levied six hundred dollars worth of parking fines against him. And, you know, the eviction is very real. And the current market does not allow people to, like, save a lot of money and do a down payment. Like, the financial system is no longer viable because of the way the central banks work, the zero-interest rate policies, the huge increases in capital wealth. So if you're not part of, you know, the system in terms of ownership, you will stay a renter for the rest of your life unless, you know, you're very, very, very lucky and you've got a couple of breaks. So I think the reality is that it's incredibly important to support renters. And at one point in my life, I was actually paying over seventy percent of my income in rent. Now I've changed jobs and so on, so I'm not quite paying as much. But I do realize, I know what it is like to be under the gun in terms of being very close to eviction. And I also wanted to remind members of council, like the Vancouver and District Labor Council, backed many of you, you know, with their policies in, you know, favor of the little person. There's the platform of whether it's One City, or the Green Party of Vancouver, or the Coalition of Progressive Electors, speaking about the needs to protect renters and pro-renter policies. And I think, you know, it is time to deliver, because if we just go back to so many public hearings, you can always see, you know, one win after another win after another win for big money and developers and developers over and over and over again. So here, there's a chance to chalk one win up for the renters. And I'm asking you to show the leadership to put people first, put people first who are renters, who are most vulnerable, and to pass this. This should be like a no-nonsense item to pass. And there could be other items to do, like to protect these rental protection policies, so the one-to-one replacement is actually by area, and to address some of the shortcomings. And there are also some other protections that would come in from the rental protection ODP, such as the tenant relocation. So there is a lot of protections that can be afforded. And it is these rental units in the mature rental stock along arterial that have C2 and other places where there are C2 that are, that have a lot of the most affordable rentals. And this has been identified by staff that some of these units are forty percent, you know, less than brand-new market. A lot of the buildings have been built like a while ago, and they're already paid off, and they're adding so much vitality.
We're at the five minutes, so thank you for calling in. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll, I'm going to ask the clerk, is there any more speakers on the line?
One more speaker, Mayor Stewart.
Okay. Speaker, if you could say your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver?
Yes, I assume that's me.
Yes, I think so.
It's Elizabeth Murphy, and I am a resident of Vancouver. So I am calling in to speak in favor of this motion. And I am actually a property owner and a property owner with rentals that are already affected by the existing rental housing ODP restrictions in RM zones. And I think there's a lot of misconception about how this will affect the building of new rentals. If it's just a one-for-one replacement, it's not going to prevent new rentals from being built because they would be counted as the replacements. And in terms of new strata, it still allows for new development. It just means that part of it would be rental. So it's not as onerous as many are making it out to be, I think. And also, when I was working for the city in housing and properties many years ago, when this policy was first being created, it always struck me as a mistake to not have included the C2 zones. And so I think that this is just correcting a mistake that was made a long time ago. And those rentals in the C2 zones are just as important for the small amount of protection that they get under the rental housing ODP for one-to-one replacement as any of the other rental in, across the city in the RM zones. So I think it's very important, and even though, you know, it has affected me over the, currently, I don't see where it's that a bad thing at all. I see it as a good public policy. And I strongly encourage council to approve this report. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for calling in. I don't see any questions for you, so thanks for participating. Clerks, have we got anybody else there on the line?
No, Mayor Stewart, the line appears to be clear.
Okay, so we're going to close the speakers list. And as we haven't had any correspondence since five PM today, we're going to close the, we're going to close the receipt of public comments. And that, council, will be it for this evening. When we return six PM on April first, we will be able to ask questions of staff and then move to a decision. So can I have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hardwick, seconded by councillor Dejanova. All in favor of recess? Say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? Great. And just a reminder to council, not to speak to folks about this, about this, as we're in the middle of the public hearing. Great. So thank you very much, council. Anything else, clerks? We're good?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and we'll talk to you.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks.
Good night. Talk to you tomorrow.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Good night. Good night.